I call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Chalka? Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first we'll have the agenda as received, proposed, or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to public comments. First, we'll start in the room. If there's anybody in the public here that wishes to address us, please come to the podium, give your name and address.
My name is Tim Youngblood, 6830 East Washman Road. I'm here to file a complaint against the Blackhawk County Zoning Commission. They have issued building permits twice now in a sensitive floodplain area without getting the development permit first. It's stated right here, I was here six weeks ago and gave you all a copy of the zoning board's, which was approved by Blackhawk County Zoning and the Board of Supervisors, and it has all the rules and regulations of getting permits. And it states in here that a permit is required, an environmentally sensitive area development permit is required to do anything, basically, in the floodplain. Twice now, our zoning board has issued building permits for someone in the county, next door, my next-door neighbor, to do improvements to a building without following the rules of the development permit. They also let another building project go without no permits, but there's been no action taken by the Board of Supervisors, the county attorney, or anybody to explain to me why these rules are not being followed. And I would like you to put me on the docket for next week so you can all explain to me why these rules are not being followed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the board at this time? Either in the room or online. All right, hearing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures of the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Yes, Ms. Veder.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $901,709.97, and out of that, we are paying $55,889.87 from the 60-40 fund. You can tell, we're kind of getting caught up from the holidays a little bit. We have a NAFCARE payment in there of $155,000. We are paying the second half of Sarah Geiger's services for working in the jail, that's $40,000. Some of the other significant things, we are paying for the digital wayfinding signage project at Pinecrest of $41,566.67. And a couple more, purchasing some wetland credits for $26,946.60, and purchasing a wheel loader for $101,243. And last but not least, we're paying InVision $40,050 for courthouse design. So, a lot of bills today. We're getting caught up from the last few weeks.
All right.
Everything appears to be in order, so.
Right. Any discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I wanted to show you some photos taken of the roads yesterday, just to give you during my roads update. So as you know, we had quite a bit of snow over the last week or so. Our crews have been out cleaning up the roads. As of today, the county, the paved road system is in very good condition, actually. I hear some few photos taken primarily from the southern and the eastern portion of the county yesterday. So the paved road system's in really good shape. We do not even have plows out today. They are back in shop, cleaning up their vehicles, replenishing our sand supplies, just keeping up with the equipment needs. The gravel road system, we did have quite a bit of drifting, as you can imagine with that amount of snow. Any areas where there's trees or buildings, it is possible then to cause drifting. This was down in the southern portion of the county, taken yesterday, so again, some very large drifts. Our guys had just gotten through yesterday afternoon and made one pass through all of our gravel road systems. This was taken on the eastern portion of the county, over towards Jessup on Independence Avenue. Some very large drifts. This is that Holgate-O Sage area that, as you come around that curve, if you're familiar with that area, that does tend to have large drifts at times throughout the winter when we get large amounts of snow. And then this was taken on O Sage Road yesterday as well, so the snow has been pushed back. We actually have our loader out in a few locations today, pushing the snow back so that if it does snow in the future, we are able to wing it back and there will be snow storage. We are also renting an excavator, probably just for the week, to also push some snow back in a few locations throughout the county. As a reminder to our citizens, when it is snowing and blowing, particularly when it's blowing around, the motor graders are generally not out because if it's filling in right back behind us, sometimes that does seem like it's a waste of fuel, a waste of our labor. So we do generally wait until it stops snowing and blowing. The plows were not out. The motor graders were not out on Saturday, but they were out on Sunday and then yesterday. We do ask people to allow us 48 hours, that is what is in our snow ordinance, to get the gravel road system open. Unfortunately, we cannot make special requests for people that have medical needs that, for example, if they are on dialysis or need emergency services, they just need to be aware of that, and we would ask that they stay in town. We are not able to prioritize those routes. The same for people who have animals that need to be fed. They need to take care of that themselves. We just are not unfortunately able to prioritize that. We consider all routes, treat everyone the same. Our motor grader operators may start at one end of the route on one day and may start at the next route, the other end of it for the next storm, for example. That's the only way we really differentiate our routes. Our guys do have about 60 to 70 miles per greater district, so it does take us that two days, particularly when they're new employees. Some of our more seasoned employees have been able to get out in about a day. So that's what's been going on. You may receive some phone calls, but can I answer any questions about the storm or?
You say, are the motor graders still out today?
So yes, thank you, Chris. The motor graders are out today. The first line is to get the roads open, open to one lane, then two lanes, and then like today, they're pushing back, winging the snow back into the ditches, cleaning up around people's mailboxes. We know that people may not have been able to get mail. Luckily, yesterday was a holiday, but just the condition of some of the mailboxes yesterday, they were probably blocked from the mail carrier. We will be out there trying to clean that up today, tomorrow, and, you know, the rest of the week, trying to clean up around some of the rural mailboxes, just wing that snow back.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
Oh, and thank you. Hats off to the crew and all the hard work that they're doing. Hey. Yes, Amanda.
Morning, Board. Amanda Fezremary, Human Resource Director. I'm here to introduce our HR intern, Megan Grow. She comes to us from University of Northern Iowa, majoring in public health, and she's here to help us with our wellness initiatives for the next several months. So I just want to welcome Megan, and we're excited to get to work with her. And, yeah, so. Couple other updates then. We've completed two of the six labor negotiations. We have four of them this week. They're all Wednesday, Thursday, so Mike Gallaway will be coming back to the board when those kind of get, I guess, certified or ratified by the unions. So to kind of touch base with the board to see how things went. The compensation classification study report is on for the consent agenda to be received and placed on file. That information has been shared with the unions, and it's been a good tool for us to come to a place of agreement so far with regards to wages, so. But if you have any questions on that, you can let me know at the consent agenda moment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other department heads? Yes.
Good morning. Caitlin Emmerich with Public Health. I did send an email last week to the board, but I also wanted to follow up with kind of some in-person comments because it's a pretty big issue that I want to make sure that we're paying attention to and following, and that is the Iowa Health and Human Services Alignment Assessment Report, which came out a little over a week ago. Last week, I finished reading it and kind of sent out a summary to the board, our Board of Health, and our public health staff, and also department heads in the county. And the reason I just want to bring it up and discuss it a little bit is because it does have some pretty big implications for the work that we're doing, depending on the recommendations that are approved, I guess, and adopted and moved forward by our legislature and by Iowa HHS in terms of the things that need to be updated in code and the things that need to be kind of changed in processes at Iowa HHS. So the two things that are affecting us at Public Health in that report, which is almost 200 pages, I think it's 193 pages, the community access recommendations, which, if you want to refer to it, those start on page 107. So the Community Access Division of Iowa HHS is where we contract through a couple of our programs, notably our Child Health Program and our First Five Programs. Our Child Health Program includes our Oral Health Programs, the gap-filling services that we provide to children in our clinic, excuse me, the Hawkeye Program, our informing program for newly Medicaid-eligible families, those kinds of things. We do have about 11 FTEs that are under our Child Health Grant. And our First Five Program, which assists families with children zero to five that have developmental or mental health concerns, that's also in community access at Iowa HHS, and we have three FTEs in that program. And so there are a couple of recommendations in this report, three to be specific, and all three of those involve some consolidation of contracting and lead, kind of lead contractor models or lead agency models. I don't have any information on what is preferred by Iowa HHS or anyone else, for that matter, but I do just want to kind of share what the recommendations are. The other recommendation that's probably, I guess, prioritized over the community access section is the Public Health Recommendations. There are four options that are presented as service delivery models for local public health in that report. Those four models include a regionally administered decentralized governance model, which would essentially remove local boards of health and make all local public health employees state employees, and it would be part of a centralized state model where local public health would be state employees delivering local public health services. So that's kind of option A, one end of the spectrum. Option B1, which is a state-defined regional health district model, where we would stay, local public health would stay county employees, but the geographic districts would be identified by the state. Option B2, which is similar to B1, but the geographic districts would be identified by the counties ourselves. And then Option C, which they're calling home rule model with incentives for regional partnerships and consolidations, is where regionalization would not be required but would be heavily incentivized through our local public health services grant, I'm assuming. And so those four models are included in the assessment report as options for consideration. So I just kind of wanted to present those to you. I'll publicly say, in my opinion, I am not in favor of the regionally administered centralized governance model. I think that that would not serve our county best. It would not serve me personally best and probably would not serve our employees best. So, you know, one of the B options, the B1, B2, or the Option C is kind of what I'm hoping will be considered. Any questions for me on that?
Do you have, is there any idea of timeline?
There isn't a timeline in the report. The assessment was a pretty quick assessment. It was announced, I think, in May or June. The Alignment Assessment Report was due to be out in October. I think it probably was finished in October because there's an October date on it, but it wasn't released until last week. So to do an alignment assessment in that short of a period of time, there's some sort of an incentive or an idea of, you know, why you're doing the alignment that quickly, probably to take action quickly. I know that legislative session started last week, and, you know, kind of the first thing that they're looking at is the behavioral health recommendations in this report. There are five components of the report. Community access and public health are two of the five. And they're doing behavioral health first, and that's kind of all I know in terms of timeline. But I would not be surprised if it was something that went to legislative session this session.
It seems like it was designed to reach a pre-John conclusion already, but that's my statement on the states. No, it's certainly, Larry, we appreciate you bringing us up to date on it, though.
Okay. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update today? Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the January 16th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Coming up later, we'll have a continuance of two different hearings that were opened last two weeks on the Robert P. Denny rezone request. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution, unless there's something that the board wishes to pull out and discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move on to contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that Blackhawk County accepts and approves the lowest responsible bid submitted by Mistigee Construction Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, the amount of $78,983 for the Blackhawk Park Shower Facility Improvements Project, utilizing American Rescue Plan funding for the purpose of maintaining the critical infrastructure at Blackhawk Park to meet the demands of the increased park usage. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board as recommended for approval for the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Okay. Wait a second. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Kendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. I don't know if you have any questions. This is the high-rise facility, shower restroom facility that was built quite a few years ago in Blackhawk Park. The shower that would never get wet did get wet in 2008. So, but since then, it has stayed dry, but it has deteriorated along the way. Those things always carry, all of our restroom facilities carry very high humidity in them through the summertime. Obviously, it's hot. There's a lot of water going with the showers and the restroom facilities. We do have great ventilation systems, but they don't always keep up. So this is just a withering of years, and it's mainly floor reconstruction, but along with that will go partitions for the shower facilities and everything else. And they will be installing a much more efficient and effective floor drain system, which should make this thing last longer than it did the first time around. So that's the project.
Very good. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. It's answered as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to other business. Item 9A, this is a resolution that requests for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, approved and direct the chair to sign for the same. Purchase one sprayer setup for the roadside vegetation management truck in the amount of $12,670 from fertilizer dealer supply of Jessup, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved a second. Kathy?
Yeah, this truck for our roadside vegetation manager is in our FY '24 budget. It has been broken up into several components. This is the last component. We already have the truck chassis and the flatbed now, and this would be the spray equipment, the tank that would hold the herbicides, and then the spray system that would actually be used to spray the herbicide on our roadside. We did, according to county procedures, we did send out some quotes or asked for quotes. We received three quotes back. This was the lowest quote, and this does, this supplier does have a component where we would be building the skid that the equipment sits on. So I would recommend that we go, that you approve this little bid.
All right, Board, any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next, we will move on to item B. This is a resolution to approve the wall-mounted workstations project for the public health at an estimated cost of $8,000 payable with American Rescue Plan Act proceeds.
So moved.
Second.
Move a second. Go ahead, Kathy.
I'm just here if you have any questions. I know it came before the board not that long ago. These would purchase four stations for our clinic to be able to mount our computers there to provide in-room assessment and documentation.
So any discussion or questions, Board?
I think we approved them and expected to get them a long time ago, wasn't it? But then we pulled them off, weren't sure about what the real.
Yeah, it was just kind of a process formality that we needed to just go through the questionnaire process and use that one rather than the previous one, I think, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further discussion or questions, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, next, we are now moving on to item 9C. This is a hearing continuance from January 2nd, 2024, hearing on the proposed ordinance number 77-283, the Denny Rezone. Item I, or item one, this is a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication. Public hearing approved at the January 2nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Yeah, I don't think we need. As we just move right into the opener's two actions. All right, so we will move just right into the motion to resume the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the hearing is open again.
Okay, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on November 21st, 2023, reviewed the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 18.93 acres from A Agricultural District to CM Commercial Manufacturing District. In order to sell the land to future businesses, it's located at north of 5640 West Cedar-Wopsey Road, which is 1,300 feet northwest of the Highway 218 and West Cedar-Wopsey Road intersection. The one parcel, okay, it was moved by shares and seconded by Sage to approve the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 18.93 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to allow for three future businesses. The request was unanimously approved. The one parcel containing the 18.93 for the proposed rezone area has been zoned A Agricultural District and CM Commercial Manufacturing District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance on November 18th, 1982. The surrounding area consists of commercial businesses, farmland, and West Cedar-Wopsey Road and the Highway 218 intersection. Land of the north and east is zoned A Agricultural District. Land of the south and west is owned CM Commercial Manufacturing District. Rezone area is designated as commercial on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Land Use Plan. Now, the surrounding area is designated as agricultural. To the north and east, land of the west and south is designated as commercial. Portion of the area is located in a special flood hazard area as designated by FEMA. However, there is enough land available outside the 100-year floodplain to allow for three new businesses. The site has a land evaluation score, 15 in least of scores, 160 indicating low agricultural value. The applicant wishes to rezone 18.93 acres from A to CM in order to allow for three future businesses at that location. The parcels are large enough to accommodate three additional developable lots that will meet the lot and size requirements for the CM Commercial Manufacturing District by being greater than 0.17 acres in size and wider than 50 feet. The land is not in agricultural production. Proposed rezone area is not located in the Blackhawk County Water Airport Land Use and Overlay Review Area. Ryan Brennan with the Blackhawk County Engineering Department indicated he cannot comment on the request because he doesn't have enough information regarding the businesses that will be at the site. Kelly Amador indicated if the future businesses at the site are manufacturing or produce industrial commercial-grade sewage, the systems will need to be sized and regulated by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. And that's the staff report.
All right.
Chris, I got a question.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Zeph, if the board was to deny this request, it'd take a supermajority?
Uh, no, no, because it was unanimously approved. So it would just, yeah, if the item was denied, then yeah, wouldn't it require a supermajority?
I would. I believe what his question was, was whether in the event that the board were to effectively reverse the decision of the underlying commission, it would take a supermajority.
No, no, it would not.
It would not.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it wasn't.
Because it wasn't denied.
It wasn't denied.
Exactly, and ordinarily, it would take a supermajority if it were denied, and then this board was going to approve.
Yeah, but the PNs unanimously approved it.
All right, are there parties present that would like to speak today?
Morning, Board. Eric Johnson with the Beecher Law Firm. Here on behalf of Robert Denny, the applicant. Let me start by thanking you for granting the continuance last meeting. It was not my plan to end 2023 being sick and start 24 being sick, but that's what happened. So I appreciate your consideration in granting that continuance. I represent Robert Denny. Robert's a longtime Blackhawk County resident, small business owner, owns some land that he's developed in the past, acquired this land, and is looking to have it rezoned. Some history, this land along Highway 218, as you recall, 218 originally had at-grade intersections. Those were deemed to be dangerous and were taken out, and we went with these overpasses. This area, this overpass, is an area that on your long-range use plan is designated as commercial. If you've been out there, you know there's some commercial activities, and this is just an expansion of that commercial activity between those existing commercial activities and Highway 218. We think that it was wise when it was determined that this could be used for commercial activities in the long-range use plan, and we think what we're asking for is consistent with that. So, my client's plan, my client's plan is this, to rezone the area. Once that area is rezoned, he will try to market that area to see if there is interest in somebody in building, buying, working with him to develop. But that is his plan, is to rezone, market, and then once that happens, if there is some interest, he will come back with either a plat or a site plan that will have a lot of details and. site plan that will have a lot of details and engineering on what that's going to look like. Just rezoning it doesn't mean that it's a free-for-all and he can do what he wants. We had this discussion for a pretty lengthy time at the planning and zoning, and they said, we want to see more details. Problem, having done development work for folks for 30-plus years, the problem with thinking you know how things are going to get developed is it's folly, and you spend a lot of money with engineers putting something together, and that's not how it develops. And so what I'm saying is, that's the process. We're going to rezone it with your permission. We will market it, and then depending on what the possible uses are, we will be coming back with either a plat or site plan that will have all those details included. There's been, I know at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was talk about water issues. Certainly, any site plan or plat we provide will have to deal with those water issues. There's certainly limitations. We can, where construction can occur, cannot increase water, and our engineer is here. Most likely, we will better the area for the water issues that are out there. This land itself, we don't think causes the water issues. But, once again, those will be addressed and dealt with, and you'll be presented a more detailed plan when development comes forward. I know at the planning and zoning, there were pictures showing a great flooding in that area, and that's true, that there was an unprecedented event out there where there was flooding. And if that was the norm out there, then there shouldn't be commercial development out there. That was the norm out there. There shouldn't be residential use out there. There shouldn't be row crops. I mean, it should all be a wetland if that's what the norm is, but that's not the norm. You know, that was an isolated instance that's happened on occasion, but that's not the norm. My client has reiterated, he has no intention of harming his neighbors. He has no intention of fighting with the neighbors. He wants to come and develop this with a plan that makes sense. Finally, the last point I'll make is, planning and zoning, your planning and zoning commission is not always the easiest group to get approval from. I know some planning and zoning commissions, it's a little easier, but my experience with the county is it has not always been easy to get approval. The fact that they sat and listened to us for a very lengthy period and unanimously approved it, I think that carries some weight. Certainly, it's not binding on you, but I think it carries some weight, and would hope that you would think about that. So those are my planned remarks, but I'm glad to address any questions that you may have.
Was there concern, Eric, at the PNZ or at any other time, I guess, as far as the number of businesses in that area? I mean, the number that would be, you know, that they'd be looking at from the different parcels?
Yeah. If you looked at our application, we didn't say we want to put three businesses on our... That was something that Seth added, is I think, I think what he was trying to point out is maybe you could break it into three businesses. We didn't add that. I mean, if you look at our application, we say use unknown, to be determined, but that was, and I'll let Seth answer that, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, like any commercial lot, you can only have two developable lots, and that's it. Otherwise, you have to come in for a rezon or whatever the case may be. So, yeah. Is there any other, any other type of questions that you may have or any...
Also, we could address that at the time.
Yeah, well, yeah, basically, only, like, if a, if a, if a piece of land zone commercial, they can only put two businesses on it, and that's it, per the zoning regulations. And if it already has one, then they can put one more, but that's it. And then, like, for homes, it's, you can do up to three potential rezon requests. For commercial, it's only two. So, one lot already has a business on it, so they could potentially have one more. And then the other lot has nothing on it, so they can have up to two businesses and not have to bring in public water or sewer.
All right. Are there others that wish to speak, others today? Yes, please come up.
Matthew Rogers, it's 8326 Waverly Road. So, the whole property is basically my drain for my field. It would have been farmed all these years, but the DOT had it under the overpass stuff. So they finally let it go last year for sale. I brought in the rest of the pictures that I forgot to bring that shows my culvert that they put in because of it. And then I've got pictures of the snow when it melts in that field. It's before they did the overpass, but that's what happens with the field, is it just turns into a lake with all the snow mounting. So then the snow eventually will then go down the water path, which I have the map of the water. It shows the flow of the water, too, in here, which I can show you, which shows the flow of all the water, which will show the next property, too. So you can keep that for that one, too. If this gets built up, all the water's just going to be pushed back into my field, and it'll wait until it can then be just gone into the ground, which that won't really happen for a long time. So then that doesn't mean I'll be able to actually farm my ground because of the water backing up on it. I have the actual whole paper for the watershed report. If I gave you the copy of the map the last time, that's the whole report of it. Any other questions?
Any questions, Board?
Yeah, this is Tom Little. Mr. Rogers, the statement was made a little earlier that if there was any building there, it might possibly improve the water conditions out there. What's your opinion on that?
They would have to build massive trenches the whole way through the field. We're talking lots of water goes through there, because the way the road is built, it all backs up into these fields.
Seth answers it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, any questions, Board, or anybody else that wishes to address us?
Good morning.
All right.
Dan Erns, VJ Engineering, representing Mr. Denny. Been working with him on many projects and been looking at this one for quite a while. Couple things I want to point out. One, this is just the rezoning. Any sort of development would need to be reviewed by the county, the county engineer. The DNR would have say over anything happening in the floodplain. I've done a lot of designs within areas that have floodplain, and we're not allowed to block water that's passing through in a regulated floodplain. The county regulates the floodplain up to the 100-year flood elevation. So basically, we understand that there's water flowing through there, as most properties have, and it seems like a big issue with this may stem from the DOT's construction, not necessarily this property, which is simply conveying that. When it comes down to the question about how this would improve those issues, it very well may improve the flow of water through there, because you're not allowed to bring any fill into that floodplain. That's regulated. You are allowed to move some amount of dirt out of it to improve that conveyance to that stormwater pipe. So that is actually the way that this could improve the situation for the upstream landowners. We cannot do harm to adjoining properties. I know the county engineer would not allow that. In their view, the state's not going to allow that. It's very well spelled out that we cannot modify that floodplain in a negative way. That would be done on a case-by-case basis. I may not be the engineer that develops these properties. It depends on property or properties. It depends on who was to purchase that and who they would hire, but, as I said, that is well regulated. One more point. When zoned ag, there is far less oversight over what is built on this property. You can build machine sheds. You can build farm buildings. You can build animal buildings, and that doesn't necessarily go through that same process. You can go out in that area. There's new buildings in that area that did not go through the process of letters being sent to neighbors, public comment. Those can be built, and often they are built in the floodplain because there's not really a little lot of oversight about it. Now, if this is zoned commercial manufacturing, any site plan has to be approved through all these steps, through the county engineer, all of that. And it has to be designed and signed off by an engineer who is not going to put their license on the line by negatively affecting the neighbor, the state, or the county. Yeah, and DNR permits, when it's zoned commercial manufacturing, they're going to have to have DNR permits to move any sort of dirt. Anything over an acre is required to have MPDS general permit. When zoned ag, those rules are quite different. They're able to move dirt. There is some regulations, but it has far less oversight. There is, it's an automatic permit instead of a permit that has to be gone to directly for that site, and you have to tell the DNR what it is that you're doing, if it's zoned commercial. Now, zoned ag, that's different rules, and there's no delineation out there. If you stand out on the property, you can't say, well, that's the floodplain, and that's not. For this to be engineered, we've done a survey. We know exactly where that is. We could go put stakes on it, exactly where the floodplain is, the 500, the 100. Because that's zoned commercial, that will all be taken into account with any site design that's done for anything that's to be developed there. Zoned ag, you can have an appkin sketch and go put up a building, move some dirt around. So I just want to make that point. I'm sure there'll be more questions, but if there's any more right now, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions right now? No, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address us today?
I'm Brett Rogge, BW Contractors, we're at 7741 Waverly Road, right across the street from the areas they're talking about. This is what happens out there. All those properties are underwater. That was in 93. It stayed for two years. Two years, my mom fought them over what happened. FEMA finally bought her out. We had portable toilet outside our house to use. That's how bad it was. It was not good. We fought with the board at that time. Were any of you on the board then? I don't think so. You don't know what happened out there. I do. I got more of these to give to you if you want to look them over and see them. It's, it's not a good thing. We've looked at every which way. We got pictures flying over the top of it when it happened. Seeing what happened. There's an underground river that goes through. Since we believe there's 50 years, I've talked to people up in Janesville. They used to duck hunt there. There's been an underground river. That flows around and comes back in in Cedar Falls. When the water level's high, that all fills in. I don't care what kind of dirt work you're going to do. I agree, a lot of the stuff shouldn't have been built there, but we did build there. You know, I got to build my business there. My folks' house was built in a low spot. It's not a good place to be. And if they want to add more buildings and put more stuff in there, it's just going to cause more problems and be tougher on the people that are there and have to live with it, because you're not buying us out. You know, if you would, you would have did it already. You're not doing that. It's not going to change. They can do whatever they think they're going to do, but that's an offshoot of the river when it gets so high. We saw it in '08. We've seen it numerous times. The last time, it came right around the corner at C-57 where the house is there, and put a gigantic rut in through there because it just come through so fast and hard. It's gone around a lot of the buildings out there. It's come through our buildings. We've had water into our business. You know, it's not a good situation, and anything that gets built out there is only going to make it worse. And I, I can't tell you enough how it shouldn't happen. It's just not good. It's, it's an area that's sustainable to flooding at any time, and when old man Rivers says it's time, it's time. He doesn't care what we think. So I really suggest you to not let this happen because it's not going to be a good thing, and there will be lawsuits, I'm sure. Thank you.
Is there any else wish to address the board at this time? All right. Does anybody have any questions, discussions?
Just a question of process. If it were to be rezoned, to Mr. Johnson's point, right, the plat and site plans, do those go, who do those go to? Do those come back to this board, or do they go to engineering?
You mean after the rezon now?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the, the, the plans are recorded as the new zoning for that property.
Sure. So if someone wants to build a development there...
Ah.
Then what hap, where does that plan go? Because right now, what we're talking about is just changing the classification of the land. We're not talking about a specific business, correct?
So there's, and I'll let Seth speak to this, but briefly, there's, there's both the potential plating of a subdivision. That's the first thing, and that gets recorded as well. And that would also come before the board, but then there would also be permitting for whatever would be built on there. So there'd be two separate items at least that would be involved.
Yeah, the, the site plan itself only goes before PNZ. It doesn't come back before council, but any, any type of plating, or there could be special permits that would go before Board of Adjustment and PNZ. So, yeah, so there's different levels involved that would be required for them to get the development approved in addition to the rezon.
If I recall, and forgive me, it's been a few years since I was on Waterloo's PNZ, but I think I remember another classification for commercial. It was like CP that required some additional approval. Am I misremembering?
Um, yeah, that's, that's with, with commercial planning. That's, that's with the city. That's not...
That's just the city. Okay.
So the site plan would not come back to this board, just to be clear for everybody?
No, any, and any type of special permit required, that would go before Board of Adjustment, and they're pretty strict, to say the least. So, yeah.
So the site plan, though, that's kind of the operational part of your department as well, but the steps to do anything about a business being there would come to it?
Absolutely.
Is there, is there a mechanism to require the site plan to come back here, or would that...
I mean, there currently isn't. I mean...
Currently isn't?
Not, not the way the zoning ordinance is written.
No, not under the current...
There's no, there's no way of...
All right, Board. Any further discussions or questions, or anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? All right. Were there any written comments received, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right. We do have a motion to, then next would be a motion to close the hearing and receive and place and file or written comments as received, including the comments from several citizens at the January 2nd, 2024 hearing when this hearing opened.
Someone?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next is resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next is ordinance adoption. The ordinance amending number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999, by adding subsection number 283 to section 6B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Robert P. Denny to consider the same for the adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-283.
So moved. Excuse me.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions, Board? All right.
I'll just, I'll just maybe throw in just for some discussion. The fact that it is, the point as well about, you know, commercial manufacturing being inherently more stringent than the existing zoning, that I've been through flooding personally. My family's been through flooding. It is traumatizing. I get it. Currently, there, it's just less recent, it, it, there is less mitigation efforts where the plat and the site plan can address those issues. And so that, while I get the, the sort of scariness of what's potential, the scariness of change, I also recognize that this change in particular development here could address, and with some review by Board of some review by Board of Adjustment, to make sure that these plans do not negatively impact the water issues out there. I am planning to support the, the effort.
And for a point of discussion, I guess I would reiterate exactly about what you said, I think, because it is just for the rezone at this point in time. And I would think a business going into this area certainly got a concern, have areas of concern if that's the case, the things that you've mentioned too. So it would be giving it a lot of thought if those things aren't addressed for them as well as for you as neighbors. And knowing that it comes back to this board for those further decisions, I guess, depending on the business that would go in or and what requirements they'd be required to make, I guess, from the site plan that they submit. I would support this as well, so.
Yeah, no, this is a, this is a tough one, but I guess my, I work over the years on the different watershed management authorities. And it leads me to the conclusion that many of these watershed maps rapidly become outdated. And they're not keeping up with the current change in climate that we're, that we're dealing with. We're dealing with much more frequency of these extreme weather events. And that's just, that's just the reality of it. And so the idea of, you know, seeing an area that, that has been so prone to flooding, just, this makes, makes us a hard one to, to move forward on.
Yeah, I believe when we discussed this issue before, as that gentleman indicated, we had a townhouse meeting up in Janesville for that whole area. And we had a very good participation of the people, and it was all due to the flooding.
All right. Any other further discussion or questions, uh, board? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Uh, next, it is about 9:52. We move on to the hearing continues from January 2nd. Hearing on proposed number, number 77-283. This is the Denny rezone. Uh, we will move right into the motion to resume the hearing.
Okay, the planning.
First, we need to take a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the motion is open.
Okay, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on November 21st, 2023, reviewed the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 2.35 acres from A agricultural district to CM, commercial manufacturing district, in order to sell the land to future businesses, which is adjacent to Waverly Road and the West Sierra Wapsi Road intersection. The request to rezone 2.35 acres from A to CM in order to allow for two future businesses. It was moved by shares and seconded by Brundet to approve the request by Robert P. Denny to rezone 2.35 acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to allow for two future businesses. The, the request was unanimously approved. The one parcel containing that 2.35 acres of the proposed rezone area has been zoned A agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance on November 18th, 1982. The surrounding area consists of commercial business and farmland. Land in the north is owned CM, commercial manufacturing district. And in the south, east-nost is owned A agricultural district. The rezone area is designated as commercial in the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Surrounding area is designated as commercial. To the north, south, and east, land in the south is designated as A agricultural district. A portion of the rezone area is located in the special flood hazard area is designated by FEMA. However, there is enough land available outside the 100-year floodplain to construct two new businesses at that location. The site has land evaluation score 43 and score of 168 indicating low agricultural value. The applicant wishes to rezone 2.35 acres from A to CM in order to have two future businesses at that location. The parcel's large enough to accommodate two developable lots that will meet the lot and size requirements for the CM, personal manufacturing district by being created in the Seagirl, 0.172 acres in size and wider than 50 feet. The land is not in agricultural production. A proposed rezone area is not located in the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport land use and height review area. Ryan Brown with the Blackhawk County Engineering Department did indicated he cannot comment on the request because he does not have enough information regarding the type of businesses that will be at the site. Kelly Amador indicated the future businesses at the site are, if they are manufacturing or produce industrial, commercial grade, systems will need to be sized and regulated by Iowa DNR. That's the request.
All right, thank you, Seth. Anybody who wishes to speak during this hearing is welcome to come up to the podium.
Eric Johnson, Beechhill Law Firm, again, on behalf of Mr. Denny. I just want to confirm that 2-2 vote, that did not pass then, is that correct?
Did not pass.
So even though it was unanimous by, you didn't need more to deny it.
That's my understanding. I'll double check, but that's my understanding.
Um, I'm, I'm not gonna make all the same points I made last time. I would note that this is a little further to the west. It's a parcel that already has buildings on it. It's simply a rezone consistent with the long, long range use plan. So it's a different, if you look at the flood map, it's a different area. And we hope that you would consider that. I would also point out Danny Mould simply rezoned all the land that is south of the previous rezone that is close to this, to commercial, just within the past year. And so, and anyway, we, we think that this parcel stands on its own and for the reasons we've indicated previously, would ask you to consider this rezone. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who wishes to speak during this hearing?
Yeah, Chris, Tom, Little again. That's the reason I asked that question. If that was approved by P and Z unanimously, I was under the impression, take a super majority vote to overturn P and Z.
Tom, this is Mike Trinan. My understanding is that that is when planning and zoning recommends against the, against the rezone, it takes a super majority to approve it under that circumstance. I did not understand that the reverse was the case. I, like I mentioned to Mr. Johnson earlier, I'll double check and report back to the board. But, but that is my understanding.
And I have to throw another wrench there, what is a super majority when there's only four presidents?
Well, and there's, there's also that question as well, but I believe that you, you have, you have to have four when you have a, when you have five, you have to have an 80%. And in this case, I believe you still have to have four to be a super majority.
Matthew Rogers again. So Bill was not able to be here. There's more flood pictures that he brought in if you'd like to see them. But the, the corner there on the, on the map, the water just flows straight across it over that house. And it is a house with farm buildings there. It's not a commercial buildings or anything. If you look at the map, there's a square over here. FEMA bought out that property from Louis Boyd quite a few years ago because it constantly flooded. Repeatedly, every single year it almost flooded. So they bought it out because it was, there was no point letting them stay there. So, but that's about all I had besides what Bill had said the last meeting we were at.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak?
Yeah, Brett Rogge again. So there's, on my map, I got Boyd's pointed out right there. And the property you're talking about is right here in the corner. That's where the big gully got washed through on the last one. When 93, when FEMA came in, they were at Boyd's house. Said it was the worst house they'd ever been in. It was destroyed by the storm. They said they'd just come from New Orleans. This was worse than that. That's how bad it was. And that's what I'm, we're trying to tell you. Trying to build in there is not a good situation at this point for any of that stuff. You put people into that situation, you're gonna hear back from them, for sure. So.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak during this hearing?
Dan Aaron's again with VJ Engineering. I just want to point out that I agree, there's definitely been some flood events out there. I was there in 93, there in 08. I live out there. I understand that it is a sandy, wet area. I just want to point out, though, that the county regulates to the 100-year floodplain. The floodplain maps that we're referring to are new as of, I think, a number of months ago. And that's, and that's what we put on all of our exhibits and all that. Those have just been updated. Lost my train of thought there. The only last thing I want to point out is kind of what I already said. He's right, there is a house out there, a whole number of farm buildings. To my knowledge, probably none of them were permitted or reviewed by anyone. And when it's zoned ag, I mean, that's, that's gonna, it's gonna continue. There's, there's nobody to tell you where that floodplain is. There's nobody to look at what your plan is on a survey and say you're within the floodplain. So I, I just, I, I don't quite understand how the rezoning would somehow make that situation worse, if not better. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak during this hearing? All right, I have, is there a motion on the floor?
To close?
Yeah.
Still move. Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Well, first, any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, all right, there's a motion to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, next we'll move on to a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. All right, next is ordinance adoption. The ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999, by adding subsection 284, section 6B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Robert P. Denning to consider for the same for adoption. And if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-284.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions, board? Can we take a vote? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
All right, next we will move on to item E, this discussion, possible board action, the acquisition of body worn patrol car cameras on behalf of the sheriff's office.
Morning, board. Al U I T Director. Wanted to request this agenda item because it's been a while since we've discussed this, so I just like to bring it up again. The ARPA committee did send this off for review with Baker Tilly, and it did come back. It is, only qualifies for replacement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd just kind of like to discuss as to what would be the next steps.
All right. Oh, would you, yeah, and you're planning to refresh our memory on the project?
Sure, sure. And I also have Sheriff Thompson and Captain Herbst here too. So the body cams that the sheriffs currently have are, are really showing their, their age. We've, we have daily issues with the body cams. They are kind of skating by. We've, we've gone to buying used items just to kind of piece them together. They don't make, so Watch, WatchGuard is the current vendor for the existing body cams. They have been bought out by Motorola. Motorola has clearly stated that they plan on increasing rates for no reason at all. Kind of the name of the game anymore. And they also are recommending that they replace all the existing hardware, and it will, it will be very expensive. The current server is having issues. When, when the sheriffs take their cameras off and they dock them, that's where the, the data stores to our local servers. We're having issues with that. We probably restart that server once every week or two. It's just not a ideal situation. They're getting, it's getting to the point where they, they almost don't have a one-to-one ratio of the, of the officers that need the body cams. And the body cams, I don't think anyone's arguing, they are very important. We, we really do need them. I just, trying to get in front of this before it gets to the point where we, we are changing, or just borrowing from other people. And, and some people go without having cameras.
So essentially, the proposal before us today is to use lost revenue dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, correct?
Correct, that, that would be.
What, what is the amount again?
So this, since this is going to be over six figures, it will need to go for public bid. We have received some initial estimates, so Axon, which you guys are familiar with, one of the biggest players. They are the biggest player in the, in the industry. Their initial estimate they gave us was upwards of $750,000. That is just for body, body worn cameras and the car cameras. Tasers are another additional thing that would probably play into this, and they are the only seller of tasers. They have the, they have a, they have monopoly over that particular market, so that is also up for renewal for the sheriffs as well.
So when you say it might play into this, how are you, what are you meaning by it might?
Well, that, when I say that is they, they are the only players, so the only way to get a discount is to kind of do a bulk purchase with Axon. Otherwise, they can, they can quote them all day. I don't know what the actual separate cost of tasers are. I'm not an expert in that. But just, just, you know, body cams and car cameras alone, that is three quarters of a million dollars or potentially higher. I'm gonna guess they would come down lower when it comes to official bid. Honestly, I can't speak for them, but I, I would, I would assume they're gonna come down a little more aggressively. And in order to, since they are the only reseller of tasers, we would have to negotiate with that. And, and their salesperson has said the only way they'll give us discount is if they, they do a bundle. Uh, but, and maybe Sheriff Thompson and Captain Herbst can speak to tasers more than that.
Yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And, and also the number of cameras. I know when you and I spoke, there was, there's field cameras, right, on body and in cars. And there's also in jail.
Yeah, I don't.
So do you have a, do you have some idea of a split of, of how many we're talking in each of those categories?
So as far as the number of body cameras, we have 20 in the field.
Yep.
We also, so that's patrol.
Yep.
We also have five in our civil division. Because, believe it or not, when you're evicting someone, that doesn't always go well. So we put body cameras on them. We also have five in investigations. So when you're doing an interview, a field interview with someone, you put body cameras, they wear them on their belt or something like that. So they're, they're body cammed as well. In, in, in our court security division, which is actually part of the jail division under utility squad, we started putting them on them as well because we've had more and more dustups in the courthouse. So that's a total of eight more bodies that are wearing body cams, and we think that that's a good idea as well. So I just lost count of how many I just told you.
Thirty-eight.
So somewhere around 40 body cameras. Then we package squad car mobiles into that as well, and there's multiple cameras in each car.
How many total? There's a total of 20 cars.
A total of 20 cars where we're putting cameras into there as well. Then we also use the same system for our interview rooms. So they check out a camera or a car the same way they would check out an interview room. So if I take Tavis Hall in to interview him, I can check out that interview room the same way that I check out a, a body camera. And that way, it's sequenced in the server the same way. So that evidence follows the case the same way. So there are some internal cameras that are maintained the same way, two interview rooms the same way. Again.
How many of those are there?
Two, two interview rooms. Then looking to maximize bang for buck, because Taser is the only show in town when it comes to those neuromuscular control devices, the electronic shocking devices that we all carry on our belts these days. It would be wise, we're. It would be wise, we're out of contract at the end of this year with TASER. And so, it's time to enter into a new negotiation with TASER.
End of this calendar or end of this fiscal?
End of this calendar year, right? Fiscal year, end of this fiscal? August. So, um, we have a master TASER instructor on staff and so we get a little bit of consideration with that because he then goes out and helps TASER instruct other facilities and organizations. But, um, that certainly doesn't, kind of pales in comparison to what we would get if we bundled, hey, we're gonna buy all these cameras and we're gonna buy all this other infrastructure, uh, in support. We're only talking about Axon, but obviously there's other players in town. You'll all remember that eight, oh, let's see, I was gonna say eighteen months ago, but it's about fourteen months ago. It's when we first were notified by Motorola that they had purchased WatchGuard and guess what? Now we're gonna start messing with your numbers and start messing with your, uh, your infrastructure. So we brought, uh, that was before Brian Snook had retired, so we brought Al on board right away and, uh, started having those conversations with Motorola. They had a very uncomfortable conversation with us, having to tell us that they were going to, uh, start charging us more and weren't going to continue to support the platform that we were on and, and all of that. So now we're band-aiding a system that really shouldn't have to be band-aided, but we are because they're no longer supporting it. We are no different than Chickasaw County, Dallas County, Cedar Falls Police, Waterloo. Uh, we, we all had to move because the system that we were currently supporting, um, has been pulled out from underneath of us. So now we're to a point where we will band-aid this system as long as we can until we make a decision to move someplace else.
Waterloo and Cedar Falls, they're using the same?
So now Waterloo and Cedar Falls are still, are, are together, they are on Axon. And one of the things that we do like about that system is if Waterloo's had an accident, Cedar Falls pulls up, because those are running the same system, they recognize each other. And so the county attorney, being the ultimate consumer of that product, even though those cars are set up differently, even though those cars are running, one's a Cedar Falls, one's a Waterloo car, they recognize that they're at the same incident. And so when they upload to evidence.com, the, the proprietary processing system for, for, uh, the maintenance of, of that video, uh, those two videos go to the same incident in the cloud. And so, that would be a force multiplier for the, for the county attorney, knowing that all three of the large agencies are all running the same software, the same hardware, um, and they all interconnect. There are queues and Waterloo runs many queues, so if they draw a gun, it automatically trips their, uh, body cameras, so there's never human error. Uh, if they pull a TASER, it automatically queues their body camera. Sometimes even if they open the door to the squad car, you can set up all kinds of queues where all of these audit, automatic triggers cause the cameras to start, uh, recording. Waterloo's set up differently than Cedar Falls. There's all those capabilities and then, again, being able to recognize when another car shows up, another vehicle, another body camera comes on scene, it triggers. And all of those triggers then cause another body cam to start recording.
I think it's, I mean, the, the cameras are a critical part of our infrastructure that project.
I hate, I hate that they're expensive and I hate that we had to be there. It can't be Tony Thompson testifying anymore and, and that be taken at its word. If it's not on video, it's not accepted, so.
They do a lot to protect both the public, yeah, public and, uh, officers alike. You know, my, my question that I'm, you know, is because I think, um, you know, I support using lost revenue dollars with this. I'm just thinking about what this RFP looks like, trying to weigh, you know, putting an RFP out, but then also knowing maybe there's only one company that we could negotiate with, potentially get a good deal. How do we have an RFP that goes out that's fair?
Well, I think.
But also open.
I think we would bifurcate this RFP. We would certainly, we would certainly look at body and car video, uh, video cameras, uh, as one singular RFP, but we would have an addendum, uh, because we can't say Motorola, tell us what you can do for tasers. There is no, but we would have an addendum for the, the second one that would cost us more, but it would be less in the long run.
And I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this.
Yeah.
Uh, Sheriff, did the, are you saying that, uh, we'd have a separate RFP for tasers from the body cams, right?
Correct.
And so, um.
Or an addendum to the RFP.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And Mr. Shorts, what, what I would envision too is we can do a, an RFP that allows for a scoring team and, and scoring ba, of scoring factors. And among those factors, you know, you would have, you would have price, of course, you would have capabilities, but you can specify in that RFP what it needs to be able to interact with, how, you know, and then, and then the people on that scoring team can also score it based upon, you know, what does it, what does it do for the county attorney's office? How well does it work with other law enforcement agencies, things like that? Uh, so that's how I would envision.
Those are those value-added services that we, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Tom, you had, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just had two questions. The first one, how did we pay for these in the past? And the second one, why weren't these in your current budget?
So, uh, again, fourteen months ago, we were developing last year's budget. And when we first raised the red flag, um, was the same time that we were developing ARPA presentations. And so instead of putting it into the budget, we were encouraged to submit it under ARPA. And, um, somehow, it never made it to the ARPA committee. I'm not gonna make comment on what happened then, but I know that it was never presented to the ARPA committee. So it languished. It never was presented in budget because we were under the understanding across the street that it was going through the ARPA processes. About eight, ten months ago, we found out that was not the case, but that was after budget presentation. So then we rekindled the budget presentation on the body cameras and I think you'll remember that. Uh, that was not well-fielded and, uh, it then again sat and languished until recently when, um, Al brought it back up. So that's a politically correct and abbreviated version of exactly what occurred.
So, looking ahead in the future then, when ARPA money doesn't exist anymore, what's the plan on paying for them?
Good question.
At one time, we were gonna take X amount out of each budget.
Yeah.
And kind of keep it and build it up.
Yep.
So what would be the plan after ARPA money's gone?
I would recommend that you do that.
Like a rotation is what you're talking, right?
Yeah, this, this is that bald spot on the tire, right? When you buy fifteen vehicles all at the same time and, and now what happens when all fifteen vehicles go out of service? Here you are discussing buying forty body cameras and twenty car cameras and, uh, twenty-some tasers all at the same time, thirty-some tasers all at the same time. My recommendation would be, be to do exactly that. And as you start to have one fail, replace it.
Just wondering, what, what is the lifespan of, of both?
So, um, right now, we're replacing our tasers every five and our body cameras are failing at about every two, two and a half. Yeah. And that's just technology right now. I hate that, too.
Every two and a half?
Every two and a half years.
Yeah. And it's really not because they're absolutely failing, it's because the back technology, the support technology, the infrastructure supporting it has changed. The cameras have gotten better, the screens have gotten smaller, the, the, uh, digital compression technology has gotten better. And so the technology, keep in mind, body cameras weren't a thing until Ferguson.
Sure.
And the first iteration of body cameras were this big. Now they're smaller than a deck of cards. And so, uh, we are on our fourth iteration. Fourth iteration of body cameras? The state patrol hasn't fielded one body camera yet. So.
Tasers, lifespan roughly?
Five years, five years is, is our rotation on tasers, right? We're on our third iteration of TASER. And it is the only game, phaser is the P-H-A-Z-Z-E-R. Tried to take a run at that and they were beat down by the Supreme Court. Copyright infringement and they lost.
And how many do we need of those? Did you say end up with the cost is, something like that?
Five? Yeah.
Morning Board, Mark Herbst. I can speak just a little bit about the, um, the body camera and the car camera longevity. During the RFP, and you should and we're encouraging you to do the RFP, some governmental agencies have chosen not to and that's what Motorola was hoping to do, how they attempted to market their acquisition of WatchGuard as we just kind of keep on going with them. But then the prices exponentially increased, we do it year by year and they no longer service the old cameras. Now, if we do the RFP, what you're gonna see with most companies is the body camera itself has a longevity of about two and a half, three years tops. Most of the companies likely are gonna attempt to get us to either enter into a five or ten-year, um, agreement with them. You can pay for that all upfront or you can do it, uh, a pay-as-you-go thing so that we can put it in our five-year plan or in a ten-year plan. Whether we do the five-year plan or ten-year plan, most of the companies are gonna propose that, um, the longevity of a car camera is approximately five years and then the technology wears out, the parts wear out, it's in a car, subjected to the heat, it's subjected to the cold, it runs continuously. It's just what it is. The body cameras, which are smaller, um, take a little bit more abuse for pursuit, they're gonna, they're gonna, um, occasionally fall off the uniform or whatever, um, they get in a tussle, they take abuse. And then second, like, secondarily, you have the battery that powers that device, which is rechargeable. They haven't come up with something that, um, that currently lasts more than two and a half or three years before it's worked anymore. So, what we should expect to see in an RFP is that if we do a five-year plan, they're gonna supply us with one car camera and then at the two and a half year mark, every camera that's a body camera will be replaced within that. If we do a ten-year plan, um, they're just gonna do it twice. The car camera will be replaced at five years or initially and then at five years again and that'll get you to the ten-year service life. The bu, the body camera will be replaced at the start, two and a half years, five years and seven and a half years, which will get you to the ten-year contract. Cedar Falls and Waterloo just opted to go for the ten-year plan so that they can lock it in long-term and then they or their future bodies won't have to continuously deal with this.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom had asked how we paid for the last, um, it was WatchGuard, we had gotten a grant through the casino.
So is the total cost seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand? We were only estimating at this time.
So, yeah, um, we brought in Axon last summer, we invited Al out to the range, they put on a demonstration for us, other agencies. They're proposing somewhere in the neighborhood, seven-fifty, eight-hundred, that would be for the five-year plan.
Okay.
If we, and what they explained to us, they know that they've got the market on TASER. They do very little bargaining with price with that particular device in itself. If we were to, um, do this jointly, they do have a little bit more latitude to bargain and get a sharper pencil on the car camera side that they will do when you do a joint thing. But I think that I agree with maybe, uh, the sheriff's recommendation and Mike's recommendation that you do that as an addendum so that these other companies can fairly compete with it, too. And then if we choose to deal with the TASER separately, that's a decision that we can all make at the time of when we have hard and vast numbers.
And Al mentioned, just as a clarification thing, the servers, is that part of this as well or is that separate?
Yeah, so, well, uh, no, the servers isn't, but storage is gonna be a central part of that and that's a great question. Historically in the past, we've liked to maintain that data on our internal, um, server. And then we, we control that, um, data and then we allow access to that data as we see, as we get subpoenas and FOIA requests and that type of thing. The trend is to go to, um, a, um, a cloud-based storage. There are some of the companies that will bid, that will give us latitude to make a decision whether it's server-based storage or cloud-based. There are some of the companies that will not. Last year when we began to get numbers, there was a company that, at that time, gave you, um, uh, if you bought their product, the ability to make your own decision, whether you do that. They no longer give that decision. They found that the, we know that, um, buying terabytes and terabytes and terabytes of server space is expensive, but also expensive to maintain. And their company has, has found that frustrating that when, um, when, um, governments buy that, decide to, to go that route and then don't have enough, then they're, end up having to maintain that and then bills get excessive. And so they've went, unless you have at least a hundred cameras, you have to go with the cloud-based storage. We won't have a hundred. I think our current numbers are forty-four body cameras, twenty car cameras. There's a couple cameras that, uh, uh, Tony had missed in there. Like I've got a camera, he's got a camera and we're considered in the administrative section of the, uh, department. We're out on the street, um, uh, here and there, but it's important when we are that we have a camera too. Any other questions?
No.
Oh, that's, I'm glad you brought that up because we did discuss that with, uh, with conservation along the way. That, um, Mike is interested in this and the trend is, um, for law enforcement, it's no longer, um, a want for ra, recording the movements with social justice and that type of thing and scrutiny on the police and law enforcement. You need to be recording this stuff. There's an expectation and the courts have an expectation that we record it. Mike has seen, seen, some of the same, um, has kept track of that and with his certified officers that are, are park rangers, oftentimes a deputy and a ranger are meeting at the same calls. We work with them, they work with us and this is an opportunity that if we do this, that they take you back on us and we're all operating on the same system.
How many are we looking at there?
Well, you know, we could probably do, I would say, I mean, north unit, south unit, and then if Farland Park is, is top on it, so. But that could be, I think, three would take care of us.
Is that how many rangers you have?
We actually have eight, but, but on a normal night, on a normal weekend night, we have one in north unit, one in the south unit and then the Farland Park.
If this is, if this, though, is a, is a CYA effort, then I, I think there's.
They would be checking that in and out, is what you're saying?
It, that's what they'd be doing. And again, I hate to flood the system, but our board started, uh, a bit of a conquest about a year ago and they wanted us to look into body cameras for these park rangers. Because again, um, uh, I mean, the sheriff's department is always at our beck and call. We try to return those favors in any way that we can and, and we're somewhat limited that way, but our, our guys have started to work with them much more when it's possible. So our board has been adamant about us looking into it. But for us to go out on our own and do five or six units with not the support of I T that we would have with this, it made no sense, um, from a dollar standpoint, um, it, it made no sense. We couldn't get, um, the technology probably that, that we would need. So we talked and said, doesn't, you know, would it make sense that we could go with you guys? Then we would all be playing the same game. And again, Sheriff Thompson brought up the fact that, uh, you know, when, uh, if a park ranger meets a sheriff's deputy, some, everything starts to all come together and all that information is being shared and the whole thing. So it really makes sense, uh, if we're going to do this. It doesn't make sense for us to go out on our own. We, we've looked into it, the expense is incredible and we would be such a small pool that it, it didn't make sense. But I just wanted to go ahead and bring that up.
But Mike, hold on, uh, so, worst-case scenario, there's an event. What's the most number of folks that you would send with a firearm to an event? You, you said, you said three or four, but. Well, if, if, if folks have a firearm and they're employed by the county, then they should have a, then they should have a body cam.
Yeah.
Just straight up.
Yep.
So, i- if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. The, the last thing we want is, uh. The last thing we want is, oh, he didn't have one because we shortchanged it on the RFP in order to save one camera. So what's our, what, what is our number, our top number, that we need to add to that 44?
Well-
64, sorry.
Well, there are, go ahead. Oh, 44 body cameras and 20 cameras, so yeah, 64 total. Now, there's gonna be a substantial difference in price between the body camera and the car camera. The car camera's far more expensive, so they'd be priced individually, but it sounds like maybe 52 with the eight.
It's eight, okay.
So how many certified offers have we got, Mike?
We have eight in county conservation.
Certified carrying a weapon?
Yes. The certified, every, yep, we have eight.
And I would agree, I, I would wanna see those folks carrying a camera, and wanna see us do it, do it the right way. And so, but I do think, when we make this investment today using the ARPA funds, we need to, starting in this next year's budget, include a little bit of capital, I think there should be a capital improvement fund for the sheriff's office that we're building up, building up these ways, you know, for IT and such, because we won't always have this, this ability to draw from these federal dollars.
Is that something that could be in our current CIP fund? We had a, tried to establish that a few years ago, a CIP fund, or would it need to be separate for this type of, I have, like the sheriff-
I don't think I would do it separately. I would-
Put it all together, just-
I would put it all together.
That we'd know.
Yeah, so they need to include that in their document.
In their budget.
Yeah.
Yes, if you, if, if the board chooses to do that, yes.
Then we do that during budget, though.
What that dollar figure looks like for a 10-year?
I think it's a good idea, really.
And it honestly sounds more like five. It sounds, it sounds more like a five-year than a 10-year, because it feels like everything that's, that's coming, one, it's all hitting this year, or not all of it, but a lot of, a lot of this large investment in the department is hitting this year, and if it's all on a five-year rotation, in five years, all of this comes due at the same time. So I'm a little concerned, I'm intrigued at the idea of potentially a 10-year agreement, just be, just recognizing it could lock in some, some costs, but-
If I understood right, maybe Al or Tony can chime in, whether we did the five-year or the 10-year, they're gonna be flexible if we wanna put down, you know, a lump sum upfront, and then year two, three, and four, with something that, you know, maybe isn't covered by ARPA, but we can interject into our CIP fund, so then it's, then it's just budgeted. But, yeah, whether we go five or 10, that's a decision that you all make and be based, you know.
I think it'd be nice to think that there would be savings on a 10-year contract, but I, I wouldn't bet my, my grandmother's farm on there not being a budget, a raise in that contract in those 10 years.
What concerns me now, listening to them talk about it, is I don't think they're talking about a purchase. I suspect they're talking about a lease, which is a whole different-
As far as ARPA-
-animal, and becomes more operating, and it, I don't know that that's really a CIP thing. It's an operating thing, if it's leased.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a whole different-
Subscription service, yeah.
So they, they, we buy the cameras, we own the cameras, but they also don't work anymore if we don't pay the subscription, so that's how they, so you can, I guess, consider that sort of a lease as well.
What about, what about the utilization of the lost revenue dollars, if this is-
I think if this lost revenue dollars were fine, and I just wanna make that distinction, that's an operating fund item, and that's how it's, it's gonna be, software as a subscription needs to be in the operating budgets, it's really not a capital item.
Yeah.
And that is, of course, what the vendors want to move us all to, right? They want that annuity, so that's what they're doing.
Yeah. In the, in the spread, I don't have it in front of me, in the spreadsheet that we've had of ARPA funds, and, and sort of penciled in where we're anticipating, I don't recall, were these in there, or were these-
They are in there.
Okay.
Yep.
What are those, what are those in at? Are they in at the 750?
750.
How about TASERS?
This is the first day anyone's ever talked about TASERS, so TASERS are nowhere, and I don't have an amount for TASERS.
I was gonna say, I don't think we've had them out yet.
Okay.
No, I don't have any idea.
Okay.
The number and the amount, because we talked about-
And so the reason the TASER is that we're currently in contract, we're gonna come out of contract next year, or I think it's August, but I think that that's in the neighborhood of a couple hun, about 200.
200,000.
That's a soft number.
Right.
200,000?
Yes. But that would be over the longevity of the, the whole program with, and I can't remember if that, I think that's a five-year deal, where each year, each officer needs to shoot a certain number of cartridges, and the cartridges are, cartridges for training are expensive, and that, it's an all-inclusive plan.
I think the-
But that is true, that they wanna move us to the annuity.
I think that the question for us today, and the action we could take, is simply whether to put this out for RFP, correct?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for.
The acquisition is kinda maybe a misnomer for what we were saying, but yeah, RFP especially. Does that seem what you guys would be interested in too? It's proving to go for RFP.
Approval of therapy with the understanding that we're probably gonna put an addendum on for at least one of the vendors for the tag-along TASER piece. And, to Tavis' point, you make me very nervous when you start talking about now supplementally trying to budget for what happens in five years, or what happens in 10 years, because we could be talking a substantial amount of additional budget, and I've done this for 16 years, if we're talking about upwards of $200,000 tagging away over a five-year plan, understand what that does to a $20 million budget. So I want you to go in eyes wide open on this, Tavis, that, it's easy to say that, but now suddenly, we're talking about something that, again, it, it makes me very nervous when, when you start doing that without some real hard numbers, when we sit down to talk brass tacks here, whenever we start talking budget, because that, that's real.
Where would you suggest in the future, Tony, that that would come from? Because this ARPA money-
Right.
-is gonna be gone.
Right.
It's gonna be smacking, gone, and it's gonna end up in the department's budget, their operating budget, and that's the only place I can see it. I mean-
Yeah, planning for-
I'm gonna take it away to somebody.
Yeah, planning for the future can be scary, but the major with no plan-
The board has been very successful at taking away all of my discretionary funds, so I don't have much for, for funds to be able to pull back and, and say, well, we could easily take it from here, Tom, I don't have those funds anymore. You've got a better purview on, on room and board, and, and, you know, those kinds of things than I do. There's a certain percentage that certainly goes towards the jail, but not much. Most of that is, is rural basic patrol activities, so that's, that's squarely where it lands for activity-wise, you know, squad cars and, and body cameras.
How did we pay for the vest? Were they budgeted?
Yeah, they come out of, they come out of a wear and appearance fund for safety, and we do CIP on those, we do five, I'm sorry, we do, every five years, we replace a third, a fifth of my vests every five years. They have a wear-out, because they fold when they sit, and, and so the Kevlar breaks down, and so every five years, my officers have a new vest, and that's just part of our five-year plan, is we replace a fifth of the vests that my deputies wear.
Now, when do the weapons have to be rotated?
So we rotate weapons every five to seven years. Last time I rotated weapons was seven years, because we just didn't have the use on them. That's, that's another calculation, but we have that in our, in our long-term projection as well. We just calculate that in, and when it's time to replace weapons, we do. But that comes up every five to seven years.
So in this five-year, in the five-year plan-
Yeah, I support this, because it's safety. I supported it when the sheriff first got his cameras, and it's one of those situations where we have no choice, but I'm gonna have to see some kind of a plan from these departments for the future, because this ARPA money's gone.
Right.
And Mike Conservation just added a cost to his budget down the road too, because I'm assuming he'll have to rotate too, so I support it, but there's gotta be a plan, because I don't know where it's gonna come from in the future.
And that kinda tags onto what I was gonna say, as far as the five-year planning, that you've probably already got a five-year plan in place, and this hasn't been added to that, but this all needs to be, so that would change for us.
Yeah. But it does change it dramatically from what we've been doing for Beans and Bullets, it's, it's crazy.
Sure does. Okay.
But again, I think as we, this really should be an operating line item, it's not gonna be 750,000 at once, it's going to be that divided by whatever the contract period is, and that is gonna become an annual cost.
Operational cost, yeah.
And it's probably not gonna be 750,000, it's probably gonna be 1.2 million.
I was gonna say, even with your TASERS, you were hitting millions.
At some point. Yeah. It's gonna price-
And it surprised you.
Yeah, you're gonna have many people then, you're gonna have cameras.
I know, I know. Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
To establish what?
I think we do.
Send it to RFP.
Send it to RFP, yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to send body worn and patrol car cameras to RFP with an addendum for TASERS.
TASERS.
Can we state where the money's coming from?
I, I, I think at some point we can, for the, for the purpose of the motion, just to establish an RFP, I don't necessarily know that we need to identify the funding.
Yeah.
Yet, we aren't, we aren't committing to the funding, we're just saying, let's, let's see what the price dollar is.
Just to proceed, kinda get this, yeah, get this information out.
Yeah.
All right, is that good with everybody?
Okay.
It's been, we have a motion in a second? Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I, I wanna make sure that this addendum, I, I heard the sheriff mention briefly that the addendum would apply to maybe one vendor. I think you, what you meant, and I wanna make sure this, that the addendum's gonna go to everyone, it's, it's just whether they can respond to the whole thing. All right.
Motorola might invent a TASER, who knows? Exciting stuff.
They, they contract with somebody else to do it. Yeah.
All right. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, roll call, a roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Paul? Yes. Excuse me. Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Short? Yes. All right. Moving on, this is item 10, this is a work session, discussion, possible board action consideration, all aspects of the fiscal year '25 budget. We'll do a brief recess.
Yeah, we'll take a brief recess for folks.
No, never mind. No, I know. So, well, we're just gonna tell him. I was like, I was looking at first, worried I wouldn't get it all. Oh, gosh. Yeah. Did you have many people last night? I know that's home, but I said to be under bridge.
I never heard of that.
But a very different person. Yeah, it is, it is.
All right, we'll resume this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. We are in the work session, this is discussion, possible board action consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '25 Blackhawk County budget. I'll turn things over to you, Michelle.
All right, thank you. So, we're just gonna kick it off today, have a little bit of a presentation, I'm gonna try and get my screen sharing done. Come on. And I want, I, we intentionally chose this photo on the cover, that is one of the bridges that's been replaced on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail using ARPA funding. So, whoops, I'm sorry, thank you. So I'll do that. So, anyway, I just thought it was appropriate to show we are making progress using the ARPA money, and that's something that's happening that benefits all our citizens. We're gonna start with a brief review of the '24 budget, because I think it's helpful to know where we're coming from as we go into this process. So, we ended with our countywide tax levy of $5.57, that raises about 32.6 million tax dollars. The rural levy is an additional $3.67, raising an additional 3.5 million, and that combined tax levy rate for the rural properties then is $9.24. Some notable things that happened in last year's budget, our debt service tax askings actually declined by 11.7%, or 229, just under 230,000. Our total tax askings were reduced by 679,000, or one, that was a one and a half percent reduction in collections. That was a 0% change in, on urban residential property tax, so they paid almost to the penny the same amount as the prior year. Rural rose slightly. That was all done, our assessed valuations increased by 1.91%, our taxable valuations declined by 1.13%, and if you remember, that was the adjustment that was made in the rollback that was made, you know, they waited till mid-February to do that. And the other notable item, well, actually, there's more than this, but we redirected 50% of our local option sales tax directly into road construction instead of debt service, because we had paid off those, enough of those bonds not to require it any longer. We also, and I should've put this on the slide, and realized I didn't, we dedicated 2.5 million of our fund balance to be used for capital items, and we allocated another million dollars to kinda try to allow for that turnover that happens as a normal course of business, so that we're not overtaxing our citizens for money that we didn't need. We did do some restructurings with personnel in the county attorney's office, we added one full-time witness coordinator position, and we eliminated two part-time positions. We reclassified the human resources staff, we reassigned a health department IT position to work 50% for Al's team. We also add, whoops, we also added a clinical dental hygienist in the health department to temporary community health workers, funded 50% of a repairtness coordinator, and if you remember, excuse me, the other 50% is funded by EMA, and we increased one public health nurse funding by 10%. Conservation, we added a naturalist one position, and we also added marketing coordinator, effective January 1st, to the board of supervisors. So, as we turn the page to look at the FY '25 budget, our total taxable valuation is growing to just under $6 billion, 5.976, and that is growth. Our rural has, it shows a slider increase from 964 to 976, so we do have some amount of growth to work with in this year's budget. That's a 2.6% increase in taxable valuation growth, and this chart's kind of interesting, we seem to be on about maybe a three to four-year cycle of values increasing, which concerns me a little bit for the next year, but we'll see if that trend holds true. Rural growth has been longer-term, smaller percentages, so, while they only grew 1.2% this year, they are still in a growth pattern since 2019. Other things to remember, and we're going to have, there's TJ, I was worried about where TJ was for a minute, because he's gonna enlighten you a little bit about the revaluation process this year, and so you'll hear more about how property values may be increasing, but our residential rollback, and I say decreased, it's resulting in a lower portion of a home being taxable, and it's dropping by nearly 18%. That, that's huge. I don't know that I ever have seen it drop that much in one year before. And if you remember, the multi-residential merged with residential last year, so the multi-res is also dropping another 18% in, in value. Another thing we're dealing with is the business property tax credit was repealed in 2024, so now the first 150,000 of a commercial property is taxed at the residential rate, but businesses still have only the 90% rollback, which is, that's going to create some real differences in who pays increased property taxes this year. The state is pushing more of that total property tax burden is gonna be paid by commercial and industrial properties, and less by residential. and less by residential. And they've, for the last 10 years, under property tax reform, they have consistently been pushing more of the tax to residential. So this is a significant change. Another thing that haven't got all the impacts calculated for us yet is several credits that used to be reimbursed by the state are now exemptions and they will not be reimbursed. We just are going to have to fund those ourselves.
What are some of those, Michelle?
Homestead credit is probably the largest. They added to that and made it an exemption so that homeowners don't pay a tax on it at all. So that's, that's just what I wanted to start out with. I don't know if you want to talk about your priorities or if you want to wait and do that. We are going to have a presentation next from the county assessor. Yeah, and then we can move into some departments today, assuming you want to, want to stay that long.
I think I want to wait a little bit on my priorities for next week.
Yeah.
If we want to move on to TJ.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, I just got a brief training session.
No test though for us.
That, and then share screen. All right, Al, where was the share screen at? I hit that button first.
Then you go full screen.
All right, thank you. Good morning, TJ Konixfeld, Blackhawk County Assessor. And I typically, I was asked to give a presentation on revaluation and our assessments and what we did for the 2023 year. And I typically give this kind of a presentation to realtors and groups that ask me to talk about values. And normally it's about an hour long, so I cut a lot of the fluff out, got down to about 20 minutes-ish. If you have any questions, just feel free to ask or interrupt. And it's, you know, I, I'll try to go somewhat quickly, but also don't want to skip a lot of the good stuff, so. Let's see if I can move that up there. There we go. Okay, so this is the beginning of the process. We rely on the permit system, realer information, aerial photography, and onsite inspections to correctly list each property to ensure equity. We're using realtors' websites, all that kind of stuff to make sure that our listing is accurate best we can, using permit system as well. Such values of properties are calculated using mass appraisal methods, which is different than a fee appraiser. So if you get a fee appraisal, you're looking at three to six individual properties that sold and they're going to compare those to yours and make adjustments. We're using mass appraisal. So we're looking at higher neighborhoods, coming up with assessed value using the sales that happen within that neighborhood. Values are set as of January 1 each year. Assessment notices are mailed to the property owners by April 1. Taxes are calculated by the auditor and approximately 18 months after establishing the assessed value of the treasure mails a tax bill. So you just, we set the value and 18 months later, the tax bill comes out for that value, for those values that we just set. So in the odd numbered years, it's important, the Iowa code requires us to revalue properties based on prior year sales, which can cause value increase or decreases without property owners making any changes to their property. So, odd numbered years, '21, '23, '25, we were, we were required to set assessed values based on sales. Whether you did anything to your house or not, you're going to see a value decrease or increase, or possibly stay the same if there's no changes needed. All right. Did I just click? Maybe I used the mouse? No? No. Oh, never mind. Okay. Our office uses this real property appraisal manual, which is provided by Department of Revenue. And this is the cost manual and the basis for the majority of the values. For the assessment year '23, a new cost manual was implemented as required by the Iowa, new Iowa code. And what they did was a new cost manual. So what that does, it just updates costs from 2008, which was our last manual, to now 2020. Costs have obviously increased and so you're seeing a lot of just new, new basis for valuations right off the get-go. And that resets all of our assessed values throughout the county. Previous cost manual was provided to us in 2008. Costs have changed significantly since then. Other changes include types of materials used and building trends, which we all see that. So we have field appraisers, they're out there measuring new houses, you know, looking at conditions of houses, picking up the additions, garages, basement finish, that kind of thing. We're updating our, our listings constantly. So what we do is we create map areas or neighborhoods, which consists of like homes, like homes in an area throughout the county. Items like your built subdivisions and other characteristics are used to help determine map areas and neighborhoods. Major roads, streets help provide boundaries as well. And what we're doing is we're just trying to have equity. So we don't want to have new houses mixing with old houses to come up with assessed value because you have two different things happening there. So we try to find neighborhoods that are similar. The, and what we're trying to avoid is equalization. The Department of Revenue will determine the median sale in a classification of property by using normal arms-length transactions within our county. If that median sale ratio is not within 95 to 105%, they issue an equalization order to the entire classification of property. So what that means is your overall sales, you have a whole list of all your residential sales. You find the middle sale, that's your median. If you're not with between 95 and 105%, which is basically assessed value by, by sale price, then they give you an equalization order. Everybody gets raised up a certain amount or everyone gets lowered a certain amount depending on if you need to be raised or lowered to get to 100%. It's the most unfair way to assess anything because some houses may need more, some houses may need less, and that may not need at all. So example of this would be after arranging all the sale ratios in a residential classification, it is determined that the median middle ratio is 93%. Department of Revenue would issue an order to raise everybody in that residential classification 7%. And so that's what we're trying to avoid. So by doing what we did, we're avoiding equalization and raising houses where they, where they should be or lowering based on sales. So the first thing happens is the house goes for sale, a declaration of value is, is filled out, given to us, has the sale information on it. And then we put a sales condition on it, which these come from the Department of Revenue. We're required to use normal arms-length transactions only, so this would just be willing buyer, willing seller. This isn't a family sale. We're not looking at foreclosures. We're not looking at, you know, someone that has an adjoining property next to them because those could influence the sale price up or down depending on the conditions of it. So we're just looking at normal arms-length, just a willing buyer, willing seller, your typical sale, whichever majority of them. This is an example of, of what we do for our map areas and neighborhoods. So this is all of South Cedar Falls here, in the purple. And then what I did is I picked out this map area. It's fairly small, but this is what we call a neighborhood or a map area. It's South Cedar Falls 22, Cal Square is to the north there. And so what you'll see is all that blue is one, one neighborhood with fairly similar homes, all built in similar timeframe. And so in 2021, this was the list of the sales that took place within that neighborhood. And the median was 93%, which is finding that middle sale. So that's obviously lower than what we need to be between 95 and 105, but it's acceptable within a range if we're looking at the entire county. That was for '21. Now for '22, sales just went through the roof. And so what we have here is in the green, everything that was from 95 to 105 is within the acceptable range. Everything with, everything in the red is well below. So you, this is the spreadsheet that will show that, which goes in and shows that median sale of 72.5%. So you're not getting in this neighborhood for less than $200,000, except for that one that's second from the bottom here, sold for 165. Other than that, everything's 200. Obviously, all of our assessed values are, you know, in the 100 range, except for this bottom one, which is a larger home. So this was for 2022 before we did anything. So what we did is we looked at the, we put the new manual on, as we talked about before, updated the, updated the map factors, updated everything we needed to do, make sure the listings were correct. And we ended up with 93.9%. In a year like this, just to give you an idea, that 1028 Orchard Drive, which is the highlighted one here, the assessed value on that was 200, that went to 201,940. It was at 154,430. So that's roughly a 30% increase on this one here. Now, they may not have done anything to their house at all, but this is what we do is we look at the sales of a neighborhood, determine what the house would sell for on the open market based on the neighbors. And so 93.9% puts almost at 94, close enough where we're, we're within the 90, within almost acceptable range there. Knowing what we were doing with these houses, you didn't want to push too high because who knows what the market's going to do the next year, which I'll show you that one. That is what's happening right now with these same map area, same neighborhood here and using those same values that we raised up. Now the median is at 99%. So it does show that we're starting to level out. We're not climbing as we went from 93 to 70, whatever, to whatever it was. Now we're, after our change in our values, we're at 99%. So, you know, nerding out, this is perfect, what you want to see in this type of neighborhood. It just works out very well, so. Uh, the results of this were during the 2022 year, there were approximately 2,000 normal arms-length transactions and the median ratio was 80%. So what that's is all of our houses within Blackhawk County, take that, I'll take all the sales, all 2,000. The middle or the median sale was 80%, well below the 95 to 105 we're supposed to be at. After revaluation, the 2023 assessment year, those 2,000 normal arms-length transactions ended up with a median ratio of 98%. So the new cost manual, finding the update and everything, adjusting map factors, adjusting everything that we do, the middle sale now is 98% for 2023. There are approximately 1,500 normal arms-length transactions or sales that had taken place for 2023, so that's this current year. The current median is 92.5%. So what that means is it's starting to, it, we're still low again. We were at 98 at January 1st, at the, in December here. Now we're, or December when the last sale took place, we're at 92.5. So if this were a revaluation year, we'd have to raise values again, but not nearly as much as we did before. Uh, because we'd be within that 95 to 100 range for. The 2024 assessment year is an interim year, so all we're doing is just maintaining our properties this year. We're not doing any kind of revaluations or anything. The sales taking place in 2023 will aid in setting values for the 2025 revaluation. So we will look at the sales that are coming through now and consider those for the next year's values. Uh, though the rollback is where this comes in with what you're going to be dealing with is residential classification. Iowa law allows for a 3% increase overall in taxable value over the entire classification of property throughout the entire state. So we're not looking at just Blackhawk County, you're looking at the entire state. So you have Cedar Rapids, Polk County, you know, Davenport. They're everybody's total residential assessed value throughout their counties. And their, the taxable values went up exponentially. And so what they're doing is this rollback is going to help offset that. Current residential rollback is 54.6%. Michelle spoke on this a little bit, meaning you'll pay on approximately 54%, 54% of the total assessed value. That's all that means. So if your $100,000 assessed, assessed value, your taxable is going to roughly 54,000. Your, your taxable value would be 54,000. Since majority of the state residential classification saw an increase around 20 to 25%, the rollback was adjusted substantially to 46%, which is doing its job in times of rapid inflation. So it's, it's just the entire state seeing these kind of increases. So they only can see a 3% increase across the entire residential classification throughout the entire state. So they had to offset all that by changing the rollback. If a residential property saw an increase of 21% in assessed value, the taxable value could see approximately 2%. That's the rollback at work then. So the rollback is what it's supposed to do. You see a 30% increase in your house doesn't mean you're going to see a 30% increase in your tax bill. Commercial properties, on the other hand, have a 90% rollback that is frozen, which means they will see larger taxable value increases. It was 100%, but in 20, in 2014, it was, they changed to 90%. It graduated like 100 to 95 to 90. So, uh, commercial has been seeing less taxes over time. From 2013, they introduced the business property tax credit as well. And we haven't done any major revaluations, so their values haven't done a whole lot, which we'll speak on that a little bit here coming up. Tax, taxing bodies such as cities, schools, police, fire determine their taxing levies and tax bill will be calculated. The 2023 assessments will be reflected on the 2024 tax bill, which will be coming out this August. So for an example, this is something that came out of Tim's, in the auditor's office, his email here. But it shows basically you've got an assessed value of, in 2022 is $100,000. If you, if it went up to 100, your new assessed value is 121,000 with the rollback, your taxable value at 54% was 54,000. Now you're looking at 40, you're looking at a 56% or 56,000 taxable value with that 2.6% increase. So all that's saying is that, you know, it's, it's, you saw a 21% increase in your assessed value, but it shows that you're seeing a 2.6% increase in your taxable value on this particular house, on this particular property that we're at $100,000 and saw that increase 21%. Larger commercials, we're going to see a larger impact. This one here is just a million-dollar property, 90% rollback. So in 2022, their assessed value, their taxable value would have been 846,000. Now with the 20, let's just say they had a 24% increase in their assessed value, which is very likely. Commercial hasn't been revalued since 2011. You're looking at, oh, you know, 1,530,000 on their taxable value because there is not a rollback that offsets that. The rollback only goes to residential or cultural properties. So as you can see, commercial is going to be the, the one that's going to see, there's nothing to help offset the inflation, basically. We haven't had larger increases in commercial, so, you know, they've been kind of seeing a steady decline. This will, if, if overall, you know, if their values just maintained where they were. There was no across-the-board increase or decrease. If there were prior, if board review adjustments, the adjustments might have been removed due to the new cost manual implementation, which could cause a larger increase in assessed value compared to the neighborhoods. So you might see a 20% increase in your overall neighborhood, which they saw that. But they might have also had a board review from a prior year. Well, that might have put them up another 10, 20%, so they could be seeing 30, 40, 50% increase. It's tough to say. Some larger increases can be attributed to new construction remodels as well. So if you, you know, saw a revaluation increase, plus you put an addition on your house, you know, you're going to see a larger increase there as well. Commercial industrial properties have seen a reduction in rollback from 100% to 90% after a law change a few years ago, it was 2014. Business property tax credit was added as well, now known as the two-tier assessment limitation. There hasn't been a large commercial industrial revaluation since 2011, meaning majority of values have not changed drastically since then like they did for 2023. There's just not a lot of commercial data out there and our values were pretty much in line since 2011. We didn't have to do a whole lot of revaluations on, just keeping them up to date. Now this year, it was, we were in the low 80s and so this is, they saw the increase just like residential did. We signed, and I wanted to make mention too, that we did sign and applied 12,000 people for the new 65 and older homestead tax exemption. That will not be reimbursed by the state like the current homestead is. So you will see a reduction in, in there as well, I would assume, just because there's so many of them. And I don't know what the number was as far as values on that. I think Michelle or Grant or someone may have that kind of information possibly. But there's, there's a lot of them there that it's not going to be reimbursed. So whatever that comes out to be tax bill-wise. So I went through that fairly quickly. Are there any questions or anything?
Uh, will the 2024, um, sales, will those be included in the 25? I know you said 23 will be, but will 24 as well?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to, the Department of Revenue focuses on the 2024 sales to determine their 2025 value median. What we'll do is we'll look at 2023, 2024, because I like to get a bigger, bigger grouping instead of just one or two sales determining what a neighborhood's worth. So we'll use two years' worth of sales to try to figure out, hey, you know, how's it trending? And see if we can reach that 95 to 100 range by using two years' worth, correct?
It'll be interesting here because it's always been the case before that the rollbacks were, were hurting residential property owners the most. And now it's the reverse.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it's set up to, and I think, I don't know the history of it, but I believe it's whenever they had rollbacks, it was for inflation. And I mean, from my understanding, and this is, it's working perfectly. Now we'll see what the legislators want to do this coming year because assessor's taking a lot of heat for all these values increases. But, you know, in the end, it's, it's doing its job now.
Well, if it's working perfectly now, likely the time the legislature will.
Yeah, this is what I'm trying to figure something else out probably, but, yeah.
You said residential is reevaluated every two years.
Every two years, yep.
Is there a frequency? What, what is the frequency for commercial?
Commercial is every two years as well.
It is, it just hasn't moved.
Yeah, well, when I say reevaluation, what we're doing is we're just looking at the sales that come through. And if, if it's not within that 95 to 105% median in the overall sale, so if you've got 40 sales, your middle sale would be, let's say, 20, and the median fell at 96 range, all we're doing is maintaining those values then. There's no reason for us to do any mass kind of appraisal. This year was just completely different because our commercial was roughly 80, 81% and they're somewhere in there, 79%. And residential was 80 or 81%. And so this year just went, just crazy, basically, yeah, for '22. I don't know, it was, '21 was actually going up as well. We knew there was going to be some problems in 2021, but 2022 wasn't revaluation year. So we didn't really have to do much with it other than just use it for future 2023 values. But yeah, once the, I don't know, you know, what attributes to this, I don't know, but just real estate market went absolutely crazy on all, pretty much all classifications.
Any other questions for TJ, board?
Do you share that typically with others? Or, I mean, as far as like send it, copy it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, I'll just give it out to realtors usually and whoever else, you know, I, I get asked these different groups and everything, so I just. You know, I, I get asked these different groups and everything. So I just, it's a, you know, it's, it's all true data. Um, you know, and, and that one example I showed, it's just that one's a good, cause it's a small neighborhood. We can all kind of, you know, and Steve get like these big neighborhoods, a little more tough because you've got, you know, old two-story homes mixing with maybe a new house or an operation threshold or a habitat for manatee. And you're like, what is the value of this? It's a little tougher for, um, for, um, presentation purposes. This one's perfect because it just, everything lines up where you need to.
Yeah. And I think showing those comparisons, you know, mean a lot to somebody that's.
Yep, definitely, definitely.
Thanks.
Anything else? Is there anything else you want me to touch on, Michelle?
No, I think you clarified it. I was going to ask you to clarify a little bit the commercial, but you covered it. So you read my mind.
All right. That works.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
All right, Board. Do we want to continue on with some departments today? Uh, some, at least some initial presentations?
That's fine.
Yeah. All right. Very good.
Okay. Yes, this is being a fun year with doing this, with trying to figure out. I just lost my. I always have too many things open. I'm trying to find the one I want to do. I'm going to close some stuff. Okay. Is there a way to get more windows on my screen? So I've got Adobe with things in it, but I don't see it up here.
It's supposed to show that you can do, you just do a sheer screen.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, but I have to get this.
Let's go down a lot.
Well, let's see. We're going to skip that department purpose one because it doesn't want to be talked about. Amanda, if you just want to talk about your department purpose statement.
All right. I'm a manifestive, my HR director here to present our budget for human resources at fiscal year 25. So, um, yeah, I highlighted our purpose, um, when I did our year in review a couple of weeks ago, but, um, it's our mission to provide quality human resources, services and support to the board of supervisors and county departments that result in effective and efficient government services for our communities. The county operations are dependent upon the energies of a 400-plus workforce that is responsive, dedicated and engaged in developing trust, building relationships and delivering exceptional service. We take pride in being part of a public service team and believe each employee contributes directly to the county's growth and success. Uh, we had some stats up there, um, which I think you all may have in front of you. Um, just some information on the number of applications that our office, uh, receives, um, hovering around 1,100 each, uh, year. New hires hovering around 75 new hires each year with separations, um, anywhere between 76 to upwards of 87. So that's just kind of a snapshot of the, uh, HR department. Moving on to the budget. Um, so not a lot changed, I guess, requests, but I do have a capital item I want to touch on. We'll get to that near the end, but just starting right at the top. The, um, salaries and benefits increases are just, uh, in, in alignment with our non-bargaining policy. So no major restructure, no major, uh, equity adjustments or anything like that, market adjustments even. Um, and so there's not a whole lot to speak to on that. Um, with the next line items we have, or any questions on salaries and benefits, I guess. Okay. Moving on to operating expenses. So not a whole lot of changes here. Um, last year, the, but the board of supervisors supported a pretty significant increase to our training budget. Um, currently it says that we paid 5,554 of the $20,000 that we had requested last year. Um, that is going to go up to about $11,000 here, once I pay a couple bills for our last month's training and this month's training, and then we'll have the back half of the year to complete the rest of that 20,000. Um, I did ask for an additional $3,000. I've, uh, included Jerry and Anna in, um, IPILRA and, which is the Iowa Public Employment Labor Relations Association chapter. It's a chapter of the national, um, membership. And I go to a national conference every year and I'd like to start bringing one of them to that conference as well. So that's kind of what is included in there as well as other, uh, conferences, uh, throughout the year. We usually have a fall conference, winter conference and a spring conference with the IPILRA chapter. It's a great opportunity to meet with other HR professionals that are employed by counties, cities, school districts, different municipalities across the state and then across, across, uh, the country too, to kind of see what trends we need to be aware of and, um, and things like that. So, uh, dues and memberships just went up with, um, increasing that for the HR intern with regards to like Survey Monkey or, um, other, um, memberships too, uh, with all three of us, um, excluding the HR intern going to like IPILRA and being a part of the national PELRA group as well. So, and that's really all that I'm requesting any changes for at this point. I can talk through, um, a few of these other ones. Probably the big one that sticks out, professional services. We budget about $9,000 for, um, attorney services when we get in a situation that we might need some assistance and guidance from a attorney, but we don't always maximize that budget. With labor negotiations this year, that'll likely get spent pretty quickly. And then we have additional funds through the board, um, to assist offsetting the labor negotiations, uh, cost. So, and then that brings us, any questions on operating?
No.
Okay. Capital. So, um, we've had a printer, scanner, Samsung in the office since before I came to HR, so going on eight years, and it's just really out of its useful life. So we'd like to replace that. Um, they actually aren't making the parts for Samsung right now for this unit that we have downstairs. So, uh, we'd like to, uh, have that be approved for us to get a new model and a new product, um, to support our office processes in HR. That's all that I have. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board?
Just say pretty straightforward.
Yeah, very straightforward. We, we kind of did a lot last year. So I'm taking a break. No, um, we'll still be, you know, we're, this budget allows us to get a lot done. I really appreciate the support for the, the HR intern, um, role. I think that's exciting for us to have, um, that additional resource for a portion of the year. And so we'll be continuing that. I did continue that here. I'd like to, um, move forward with that. But otherwise, yeah, if there's any questions you have, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to leave now. Sorry, I'm not sticking around for the other.
Not quite.
All right. Sorry.
Amanda, you want to cover civil service really quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. We missed it. We're not done.
Sorry about that.
Civil service. Okay. Um, so this is required under Iowa code. Um, our office also handles all of the, uh, deputy sheriff entrance, entrance exams and the, um, promotional exams for sworn officers and, and peace officers, uh, with regards that are employed under the sheriff's office. So it doesn't include the conservation, uh, group, but we have kind of assisted with some of the entrance exams and requirements when they do, um, have some of the, have that vacancy available. So again, nothing, I'm not proposing any changes here. This is such a fluid budget that, um, it just depends on how many deputies they're hiring. A lot of our recruitment for deputy right now comes from a detention officer or another civilian role within the jail. So oftentimes we're not redoing the pre-employment testing, like physicals, um, any kind of like additional testing has kind of already been captured when they were, um, first being vetted for their, uh, civilian role within the jail or within the sheriff's oper, operations. So, um, not really proposing any changes at, changes at this time. It just needs to be approved, uh, per Iowa code. And this is the only civil service, um, testing position that we have. It's a lot different than cities, as Michelle can attest to. So, but this one, we have to have a personnel director actually administer and conduct, um, the tests that are approved by IL, ILEA. So I complete a training every couple of years to get that done. But, and then we'll be having a lot of movement with that, with promotion, um, likely in the next couple of years as we have a, um, probably a large wave of retirements coming out of the sheriff's office for sworn officers. So, be busy, but.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next. Well, for some reason, department purpose statements are blank. I don't know why. So fortunately the board has them. I don't think I'm going to read the whole thing to you. I think you know, you probably know why you're here and why we have the board. Um, so this budget is pretty much only the board office. I, it doesn't include all the other agencies and supervisory functions. We will cover those at a later date. Um, and there, there are some changes in here with adding the marketing coordinator and also during the year, um, as Billy Joe Heth transferred to the treasurer's office, we, we realized it might make more sense to have the position that was previously in the auditor's office be located out of the board office. So we are currently working on recruiting for that. In terms of operating expenses in the board office solely, I have not increased that primarily because we did budget for the strategic planning in the current fiscal year. And I have left that budget in there for 25, thinking we may not be finished with it, but hoping then that, that we wouldn't need all of it for strategic planning and can maybe do some of the things that we'd like to do for, um, the marketing position and, and things like that. But we'll see how that works out. Otherwise, no changes to that budget, although our FT account is growing.
When you say things for the market, I'm assuming you're talking material or subscriptions, that sort of stuff that would need to.
Yep. Yep. Exactly. Yep. Let's see. Well, I really don't know. I wrote all these mental, the department purpose statements and I saved them into Adobe, but they're not here today. So I thought we'd just cover really quick, the mental health patient advocate. That is another position required by the county to have under state law. So, um, we do that. They are appointed by the court to represent the interests of individuals who have been involuntarily committed. And we do have one person doing that. Her, it's interesting because her total personnel costs and any other costs she has are reimbursed to us by county social services, but she is our employee and therefore you see her in our budget. We did authorize and they did agree to provide her with a cell phone. She had not had that previously. So that will be coming. And with no questions with that, our last one, last but not least, is going to be general assistance with Colleen.
At my purpose or?
No, for some reason they are.
We do, but if you want to review.
Yeah, they have them in front of them. I just, I apologize, but I.
No, that's fine.
Display it.
So Colleen Shipper, general assistance. Um, I can read through just the top part of the purpose. Um, the purpose of Black Hawk County General Assistance Program is to provide aid to a need, needy or poor person who needs immediate assistance not obtainable for any other, from any other source. Then it gets more detailed, but you can just read through that. The statistics she has listed, um, it's just really hard to predict. They're kind of all over the place. In, um, fiscal year 2022, they definitely plunged just because there was a lot of COVID funds. We're getting right back up there to where we were before. So, and that's it for that. Really just not a lot of changes in the overall budget at all. I think there's only a 0.48% increase for a total of $3,520. That increase just includes my salary, a 3% increase for the agencies and a 3% increase for the judicial hospital referee. So that's mainly where that increase comes from is just in those three items. Um, EMA, Jesse Cosby and Operation Threshold continue to do an outstanding job doing the intakes for the county rent and utility funds. And the only reason I can really keep the budget at an increase of only 0.48% is we had been having a significant surplus at the end of previous fiscal years, just trying to get that back on track and budget closer to the actual amounts for the previous fiscal years. It's not always easy to predict that, but it seems like we're getting a lot closer than what we were. So I'm happy with that. Um, right now, we're pretty much on target for each of the budgeted line items for fiscal year 24. So I pretty much stuck exactly for the fiscal year 25 with what I budgeted for the 24. And then within GA budget, there's money budgeted for substance abuse committals, and that's for the judicial hospital referee, attorney fees, sheriff's transports and hospital charges. Um, the over, the overall, I decreased that by 3,800 just because substance abuse committals seem to be at their high during COVID. They seem to be leveling off now. So I did decrease that a little bit. For revenues, I'm just budgeted $500 less. There again, it's just very hard to predict the revenues. We have very few revenues come into general assistance. Mainly they're just for interim assistance reimbursement. And once in a while, we do have clients reimbursed. And just, um, I thought Dr. Bickley was going to be on for today, but he's not. But I just want to put a plug in for him. Him and I work real closely together on a lot of indigent barials. We just have a really good system in place for that. So I'm proud of that process because that's not easy for him to have to deal with that every day either. And then just want to thank the board for the continued support of the program. The amounts that we assist with just don't seem like a lot, but when you're seeing it every day firsthand, it does make a difference. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
I think it's a, a pretty straightforward budget. Um, you know, we discussed, um, some of us, uh, that we wanted to see, we'd like to see the food bank moved into this budget, funding for the food bank every year. Um, and so I, I do still want to see that change happen this year.
I don't, I'm not sure belongs in this budget. We could maybe create a separate activity for it.
Okay.
If that's what the board wants to do.
Something like that. Yeah. Because I think the difference was some of the things included in this one are people working for us or doing the role of the county and we're paying employees. It would be almost like a separate program or something. Is that kind of the way you see that?
Right. Yes.
What I thought rather than Colleen's responsibility.
Yeah. And it, we, I think we would need to have some kind of contract with them annually too, because this is where we are mandated, I guess, to do this under state law, but the, the food bank's a different animal.
Yeah. Yeah. I would wonder about that too. We, I was wondering if other counties, if anybody even knew of other counties doing that, because I thought depending on the year, sometimes they've always kind of fallen in the same. When we've done our donations, as, uh, important as it is to have the food, you know, food insecurity, I was going to say addressed, um, if there were ever a year or something where it was difficult for the county to make a contract commitment or something like that, I, I just was curious to, a little more information on that, if that even exists. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not sure with, with other counties too. I mean, I just know that I want to see us include addressing food insecurity in every year's budget. Um, it's, if it doesn't make sense to have it in general assistance, that's fine, but as long as it's going to be a line item every, every year, because it's, what I don't, what I don't like is the situation of us having to pit it against all these other great proposals that are great for the community. But, but food insecurity stands alone, I think, as a core, um, a core need in this community, whether it's, whether the legislature, you know, demands it or not. I think it's a, it's a core thing that we, we've got to commit to every year.
Do you think the same would be, could argument could be made for housing too? Maybe, I mean, just because I know emergency food and shelter, that kind of thing kind of plays really well together. Would that mean?
I think, yeah, the, but, and I think that's why we are. I think, yeah, we, we do fund those every year. So that's.
Well, the assistance and the work that they're doing. But yeah, we are doing some of that. But the food, that's where you mean have the food insecurity addressed in the same way. Does you, does that mean more research on your end as far as for where we would do something like that or where we could include it or how?
Yeah. I'll, I can look into that.
Well, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Michelle, anything else for today?
Um, I think that's it. That went pretty fast for all the work it took to get to that point.
What are we looking at for Thursday?
Yeah, do we, are we Tuesday, Thursdays now?
Hopefully we will have some for Thursday. I would hope. I, I've got to set that up with departments yet. So I don't want to say, but hopefully we'll have a few more departments for Thursday. I think it'll be shorter, obviously. But it's, um, we're, Amanda and I-
I think it'll be shorter, obviously, but it's, Amanda and I, Amanda's done a lot of work. We are doing a lot to try to incorporate as much as we know about negotiations and the COM study, and you'll still have to approve all that, so there may be adjustments later, but we're trying to get close with what we're presenting to you now.
So for right now, we'll plan on nine o'clock Thursday morning. Is that, this thing with the Tuesday, Thursday, that's good for everybody still?
Yes, I'll admit preferably, if, if we can have even a little heads up of what departments coming, that's, that's great. I know that's, especially this first week is going to be, you know, clearly difficult, but, yeah.
Sounds good. All right, we'll move on.
As we're talking budget stuff, just to restate, I know I've talked with you individually, but I would love to see these discussions, you know, Tuesdays are a little difficult, I think, to kick them down to the basement in that conference room, but I think there is value in having some of the budget discussions more work session oriented than, than the sort of straight up presentations, and maybe that's, you know, future meetings. But I think there's, there's value in just the setup downstairs, in that downstairs conference room to be able to facilitate more conversation and just a better dialogue and just a better flow. So just to throw that on the radar, I personally would love to see it. I don't know where the other supervisors are at on the.
Oh, it's come up over the years.
Yeah, something I would definitely come up with.
We've talked about, yeah, kind of a round table kind of discussions being a little more informal, but little, yeah, kind of open dialogue, a little bit more than this is. I think we throw several meetings.
I think we just, we try it and just see how it.
Can I ask that we allow the department presentations to be here? Because of the sound and some of the problems we've had with them. Yes, I think, I am not sure the format of that room lends well for the department that's trying to make, talk to you. Once you get to a point where you are, where me and the departments aren't presenting as much, I think that might make more sense.
Can you maybe expand a little bit on, I guess I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it, sorry. What are the barriers?
I'm not seeing what you're asking either.
What are the barriers, what are the barriers to being in the basement for a presentation versus being up here?
It's just the rooms.
Can we, do we have audio downstairs?
We've, there is, it's, there's been difficulties with it for, I have been participating in a lot of things down there. Sometimes it works well. It does, sometimes it does not, and I know, I believe Al might have installed something different. I don't know how well the new stuff works yet, but I think, in terms when you're, I think when you're making a presentation to be in a square area, I don't know how many people can even fit in that room, so it would be difficult for the other staff to attend. And I just.
Maybe for the presentation part of it.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for the present.
I know everybody has an opportunity to present and then maybe go into work sessions.
Yes.
Because we always do another round, I mean, we have to do others.
Sure, yeah.
Work through. I know. I've, when I've ever been in those meetings, that's not been as many as many of you have in staff, but it's not been, it's not worked well from the people on Zoom, hearing the people in the room or any of that question, answer kind of a thing, so.
Yeah, we did have issues with that, that camera. We found a determination that that mic is too, isn't adequate for a room that size. So we did install a similar mic like this Yeti right here, it's in the ceiling, and we have tested a couple of meetings, and it does pick up everything that people say, so that the audio part is improved. I will say it's not as convenient as if you have a presentation to just come up and you have this nice podium to present, but we can, we can still make arrangements. You still can share. You can either do, join the meeting, you know, from another device, or we can still use the computer that's existing in that room too, so there are options, but just let us know what you want to do.
Will there be enough room for the public down there?
Probably not.
Yeah, that might, yeah, I mean, it's a smaller room.
Because a lot of the staff like to come, I was going to say, to attend as well, but I thought with the staff kind of sitting on the outskirts of the room, it's probably not. I know we don't have a lot today, but we ran a little long here.
Whatever you guys decide, I will try to accommodate as best as we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Thursday, you said just be a couple that you thought, or just trying to do a few. We're not going to have a long day of it anyway, so.
No, so there, a lot of, there's negotiation meetings this Wednesday and Thursday for some large groups that we're hoping to get incorporated. So I'm obviously not presenting those on Thursday. We won't be ready. It'll be a lot of work to get those wrapped up after that and for the next week, so there are a few I think we can go ahead with. We've, I've met with people, but I've got some questions out to them, so.
Do you have information, I mean, an idea of who you think would be presenting on Thursday as far as who you'd like to have if you, after you confirm?
I have some in my head, but based on how quickly things went today, it would be a short meeting. I will say that.
Oh, okay.
Assuming they're similar.
Yes, it went, well, some of these were, yeah, pretty straightforward, but yeah.
All right, very good. Anything else, Ward?
Oh, for the reports? Okay.
All right, I'll move on to reports, your information. Reports, your information for the board?
Before I forget that, I was glad that the point came up about the strategic planning, but I was going to say, just to say something to the board about it, back, back last fall, I know we had some conversations in-house, but also I'd reached out to Grant because I said, we wanted to get the strategic planning done in this year if we could, you know, and that's kind of the direction we were taking with all of the positions and things we were looking at and the logo and just kind of, and we knew IDM had done ours before, but looking, I think, maybe at seeing what else was out there and who could possibly help us with this. And it, and Grant looked at several and reached out to several, and it was even difficult. He reached out to ISAC, and it was, it seemed like there wasn't a large number of groups that met with counties and cities, but somebody mentioned Lynn County had done that, so I followed up with Darren Gage there and just asked him about it, and he mentioned, it's a gentleman by the name of Ted Garnett. I don't know if anybody's heard of him. I think his business is PS Culture Matters, and I'll send you, after I pulled up that website, I'm happy to do it if you don't see it, but you'll find it with a Google. And they'd mentioned how pleased they were with him, and they've continued to have operations operating with him. And then I followed up with another one just because they'd mentioned Story County, oh, I think on his website, there's Story County, and they said they were very happy with him too. So when I reached out to him about it, he said he was more than happy to come in to the, to do something for us, just to show up, and it's because it's a board decision whether we go that way or look at others, we knew we had that option. And so that, that kind of brought us to what's the schedule? And he's all over the country and as well as, you know, some of those state, but he gave us some dates. Some of those were like Wednesdays and Fridays and things that he could make it here and actually be in person, because I kind of said that would probably be best for us to see him in person as well as he had us. And I, and the dates then he gave me from an immediate timeline, if we wanted to look at, were the January 23rd at 10:00 or 1:00, which is next Tuesday, or January 26th, which was a Friday, or January 31st, which was a Wednesday. And I just thought, maybe for us from a, and I don't know what would be planned for next Tuesday's budget, but he's, 10 o'clock was his timeline, he could be here at 10 o'clock and give, if we just add him to our budget for the, our budget for our agenda for that time next week and take some time to have him present and tell us about what he's done or what, where he's been and.
Yeah, no, I'd be, I would be curious.
Do something then and think about it or add others to it with the going forward.
I think the 23rd makes sense.
Does it? And like I said, I knew it'd be awkward around the agenda. He didn't just say, I'll be here for the meeting at 10 o'clock, because like, okay. So I thought we'd, if that worked for everybody, I'd see, but yeah, I was impressed by his, his website because he's done a lot of work with Deer and Rockwell Collins and GE, but the counties and cities and stuff that he's worked with too. I thought something worth maybe us taking a look at.
So this would be just sort of talk about what his process is or what's the?
Probably, that's what I'm thinking too. I mean, as far as it's just an introductory kind of thing with him and seeing how he does it and what we'd want, probably, I didn't, I didn't ask him thoroughly, like I just said, let me see what works for us.
Would, would we ask, like you, the, whatever it is now, Institute for Decision Making, I forget what their, their new thing is, but would we ask them to do a similar sort of presentation of what they're offering it or how?
That would be up to us if we wanted to, because it's professional services. I think other counties hadn't done it that way. They just went out for, this is what we needed and looked for who they wanted and did, and we could do similar. He did ask a question about if we had a, ISAC mentioned that we had worked with them and had done our strategic planning, and he wondered if it would be, he said, from his standpoint, it's more difficult for him to come in and try to take someone else's plan and then let's work through it, but that would, I said, well, that's a board decision and where we'd want to go, but I said, we'd certainly be open to options, it sounded like for us to, what would take us, but only seeing here, but it gave us a chance to see here and touch. So if that works for everybody to do that in a board meeting just as well as, or as easy for us, I guess, is odd times during the week, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that, because I said I'd give him the heads up for him.
All right. Any other reports from the board?
No, congratulations again on the Warming Center.
Yeah.
I guess just because of, yeah, good coverage.
I'll just share a little bit that the, your long four-year struggle of organizing and, and staying at it, a lot of people came together and stayed dedicated to make the Cedar Valley Warming and Resource Center a possibility. We opened our doors to the public for the first time last night at 8 o'clock, and it'll be a place, it's a low barrier shelter where people, no matter what stage of life they're in, will have a warm place to get in off the streets, and in the morning, they have the option to be connected with various services in, in the community. And so it's, it's just really great that, that it's, that it's finally happened. It's, it's a big relief, especially if you, just out last night, just how awful and dangerously cold, cold it was, and so nobody, not the least among us, should ever die alone cold out on the streets.
No, they gave the hours, I think, and, because I thought, I even saw somebody comment, it was like, could it open early or like something like that? But I just thought, is it, does it go till a certain time this year too for us to, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, so, so in the past, we, we've made the, made kind of judgment calls sometimes to extend the hours, like during, during extreme weather events, but the basic philosophy principle is that there are a number of daytime services, including places like the hospitality house, including, you know, public libraries, including all the different social service agencies that people are giving services from, that the, that the need, most extreme need to focus on last, that, right now was, was the overnight need for a low barrier. Yep. And there'll be discussions in the future, you know, as now that we've got the facility of, you know, potential, you know, cooling center hours, you know, we had those extremely dangerous days this summer where we had, you know, four days in a row, and if the temperature doesn't drop at all, your body can't regulate, or, and so we're, we're going to be looking at those hours, and that's here is kind of a different population. That might be serving people that, that have a home, but it's not air conditioned, and they just need a place to stay cool for those couple hours, so we're going to look into that kind of stuff as well.
So it's open now for ongoing until you decide?
Yeah, it's open now, now definitely for the winter season, and then we'll, then we'll readjust, but we've got, it's certainly, we're not going to leave it set, empty and idle throughout the year.
Oh, no, I just meant where there's certain days.
Too great, too great of an opportunity and resource to use. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
It moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you.